Court will come to order. It is Monday, April the 14th, 2025. It's nine o'clock in the morning and the Kerr County Commissioners' Court is now in session. If you would please rise for the prayer and the pledge, which we'll end by Commissioner Jones.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we do come before your throne and thank you for the opportunity to assemble here today, Father. We pray good works on what we accomplish here today, Father. We want to recognize this as being Holy Week, Father, and that we spend many, many hours during this week reflecting upon the sacrifice that you made for us. Father, help us to examine closely the meditations of our heart, the words of our lips, and all these things we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, as we begin Commissioners' Court meetings, I hold the phone up to remind you, please turn it to vibrate or off so that it doesn't interrupt the proceedings. The first thing we do on our agenda is have public input. This is an opportunity for the public to tell the court what you think we need to know. It's not an opportunity for us to respond. So, just so you know, that we have to listen to what you say, but we can't say anything. We ask that you go to the podium, identify yourself, and where your precinct, which precinct you're in, and limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. And we invite you to come for that public input for any item that is not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we ask that you wait until the agenda item is called and address this at that time. I've got one sign-up sheet to speak. Dr. Templeton back there, I don't know if anybody else is going to speak, but the forms are in the back, and you can get them and give them to Nate Haye, offered our county clerk. Okay, so with that, any public comments? A whole lot of explanation for nothing, huh? Sorry. Okay, well, let's move on to Commissioners' comments. Precinct one.
We put the burn ban back in effect this morning. Winds are just going to be way too high, too dry. I want to thank Commissioner Harris. He's taken time to take me out to view some different things here. I had never been to the annex before, and we spent some time out at the Hill Country Youth Event Center, getting a little deeper explanation on stuff, and I appreciate that greatly. And there is a lot of work to be done out there. I got to attend a bunch of meetings over the last three weeks, a ton of them, too many of them to probably report on. Probably the most interesting was the Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office. Of all times that I got put on there, the topic was budget. So, thank you, Judge.
I don't control their agenda.
But, good stuff. I did enjoy it, and I did learn a lot, so I appreciate that. But that's about what I got today.
Okay. Two? Well, it's very unusual, but precinct two is now the only precinct where the burn ban is still lifted. So, I've been talking closely with my fire chiefs, and we're of the opinion that we'll be okay for a little while longer. Things have definitely started greening up, and we don't have the humidity as low as we have previously. And, yes, certainly the winds are high, and, you know, you can only ask the public to use a little common sense, and if, look at the weather forecast before you burn. If the winds are gusty, then please don't burn. And make sure that you call the burn ban hotline before you burn, because there's a good chance that we may put the burn ban back in place for precinct two if we don't get the rains that are forecasted later in the week. So, that burn ban hotline number, once again, 830-792-4328. And I'll have other reports on the agenda and for the liaison reports at the end. Good. Limited you to less than three minutes. Congratulations. That's unusual. Probably something to do with my travel. Well, you know, it's kind of paradoxical that we limited you to three minutes. We don't limit anybody on the court, so we're trying to make a good example here. Precinct three.
Set timer for three minutes.
Animal Control, great visit that we had there. We also met with the fire marshal afterwards to do a little coordination. It's going well. We're doing a lot of horizontal construction. Feel good about how that's going, especially with the meetings with Jonathan Letts and his crew, in addition to what we do onsite with the construction. So, okay. We did have an issue where we got Comfort Fire Department to do some burn pile work for us. There was some illegal dumping on Cypress Creek right after Techstock cleared it. So, thank you all for those that are involved in that, to find out who did that, which was a little disturbing, but we got it taken care of. We had an HCLI meeting, Hill Country Leadership Institute, which I'm involved in. It's a great coordination opportunity, and look forward to that. Sheriff's Academy, always a hit, especially this week. Tale, or, sorry, the jail tour was probably the highlight. Not a lot of people have been in a jail before to walk around and see that, let alone hearing from our judges like Judge Harris. Super wonderful, and look forward to that next week or this week. Thank you for Commissioner Harris's tour of the west area. Yeah, there were places I hadn't been, and I'm going to return today to go see the fish hatchery. If you haven't seen the little display out there, I'm going at 1:30 today, as long as we get out of here on time. So, I did enjoy that as well. Burn ban is lifted, sorry, is in effect for precinct three. I did that on, for Sunday, and we're just watching the weather, and hopefully it gets a little wetter out there as well. Hill Country Energy SRPC, big meeting. We're going to maybe try to make some extra room, maybe try to get it on Microsoft Teams for those that can't sit in the room down here. We also have a good UGRA meeting coming up that I'll take in the future, and that's it.
All right, good. I don't have a whole lot. My precinct four's burn ban's been on for a while. I've gotten a lot of calls that don't like it, but you look out the window and you see the limbs blowing and everything else, it's justified. And that's what my fire chief wants, so I always go by their recommendations. I just want to talk about what's coming up. We have Easter coming up this Sunday. A lot of traveling, a lot of events, especially out in precinct four. A lot of churches are having unique events for the children and what have you, and a lot of people will be traveling, so drive safely. Prayers for you if you are traveling, as well as your relatives if they're coming to see you. So, that's all I got.
Good.
Wrapped in 30 seconds.
So, let's move on to the consideration agenda. Item 1.1, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on a request from the Hands Off Kerr County Democrats Organization to use the courthouse grounds on Saturday, April the 19th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for peaceful protest. Carol Cawkins. If you both identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Carol Cawkins.
Kathy Turner, precinct four.
Precinct.
Also, as an aside before we start, I'm an Easter bunny this coming week, okay? So, I didn't wear my costume, to be respectful. We stated our purpose in item 1.1 and are certainly welcome, welcome you to ask questions or ask for further explanation. Kathy?
I've got a question.
Yes.
Are y'all the same group that was here a couple of weeks ago out here?
We are.
April 6th.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm sure it wasn't y'all, possibly, but how would you feel if somebody drove a circus right through the middle of your event? Because that's kind of what happened to the car show that had done what you're doing now.
Right.
And came and got permission to be here.
Right.
And I watched traffic backed up, and we actually had to have the Sheriff's Department over there just to keep an eye on things. So, if y'all are allowed to do this, are you going to keep it with some type of decorum or something to control it better?
Kathy? First of all, we were regretful, very regretful when we, when we got there and saw that there was a planned event, especially one related to veterans, which is near and dear to my part. I think the issue of safety and concerns, I mean, our people, if you will, it was just a group of individuals. It was not all Democrats, I'd like to point out, weren't, you know, running out into the street and weren't accosting people or doing anything of that nature. So, the concern this time is that by requesting the grounds, then we'll have access to the parking lot, and we'll probably still be on the sidewalk, just like we were before. We don't really intend to be.
I don't believe the sidewalk was the issue.
Well, okay.
And I don't care whether it was Democrat, Republican, or Independent. That makes no difference to me.
Okay.
It was just the fact that I, what I saw was pretty disruptive, and it literally took away from the event that was there.
And.
And, you know, I think you can do better.
Well, and we do regret that, the timing of it. This was a national event, and that's, that's why we're here, so that we could prevent that, you know?
And it's also a larger strain on our Sheriff's Department as well, because, you know, they had to make sure everything kept under control and what have you, and I came up here and visited with Scott and some of the others that day, but y'all were already gone by, I believe, 1:00 or whatever. But it does, did create an extra strain on our law enforcement.
I just know, I received a number of complaints from some of my constituents that it ruined the car show, just totally ruined it on that Sunday. And again, they had sought permission to have that event, and for, you know, the total lack of respect for that is pretty concerning.
Sir, we meant no disrespect. That's why we're here today respectfully to request, and the operative word is peaceful, as it was last time, okay? We mean.
Is this a mostly peaceful protest, or what exactly are you protesting?
I think your key word is our slogan. Kathy mentioned, this is a national group, and we are just stating our slogan, hands off, and everybody has a different idea, every person there, of what they would like to have more input on, okay? And to do it peacefully, we wave signs, we don't, like Kathy said, we don't go out in the street, we don't engage. We have a further safety.
I need you to speak into the microphone, because your voice is so soft, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now, sir?
Well, it doesn't help us up here.
It doesn't help us up here. I mean, people that are watching online can hear you, but.
So, we need to speak louder.
Yes.
There you go. Sound check, sound check. Kathy and I have worked together to develop, to show up and buddy up and huddle up. There will be safety meetings prior to the beginning. We are going to buddy up to keep everybody in check, if they are out of check, okay? It's done with respect, and I'm going to take it aside. I was born here. This courthouse is sacred ground for me, okay? I was born in that hospital that isn't there anymore. I've been here a long time. I respect you, your court, my county, and I aim to live here and have all but seven years of my 75 years. That is my intent. I hope you believe me. Kathy?
Do you have any other questions?
What's hands off, if that's your slogan? Can you explain, hands off what? So, the way that your elected officials understand what you're asking for.
We're just asking for our constitutional right to be allowed. We were, we were okay staying on the sidewalks last time, which is, what was explained to me is, belongs to the city, and therefore we had the right to be on the sidewalks, and so we did that. Hands off, to me, means hands off the VA mainly, hands off Social Security, hands off Medicare, hands off government institutes that were put in place and funded by Congress and now are being defunded, eliminated, and I worry about people that I love, worry about myself, Social Security and Medicare. So, I think as a retired federal government employee, I've seen sadly, I've seen some waste, I haven't seen fraud, but I've seen some waste, and I think the government, I think the government could do a better job of addressing things like that. But when you take a chainsaw to things like the VA, for instance, nationwide, or Social Security, or whatever, fill in the blank, and that's part of the slogan, is hands off my, and then people would fill in the blank, literally, with hands off my Medicare, or hands off my VA. That was the sign that I held, because I do, even though I'm not a veteran, I do, I think very fondly of the VA and veterans, and so that was kind of my big reason for being there and for helping to organize this. You know, and it, it's open to debate. People can say, oh, there's so much fraud and waste in the federal government. Okay, then let's address it in a systematic way. Let's not just, to use the cartoons that we see, let's not take a chainsaw to such a huge organization that impacts my life and your life and everyone's life here. There needs to be a better way of doing it, and that's what, you know, Congress needs to be working on, and not, not someone who's appointed by the executive branch of the government. So, I could kind of go on and on, but, but it's hands off, hands off in doing things in this way. Hands off taking, taking things lightly, firing people and then having to rehire them a few weeks later. Needs to be open and transparent and not done in this way.
Okay, thank you for explaining.
Any further explanation required on that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, one of the things that the court tries to do is to not be partisan, trying to protect everybody's right to tell us what you think. The April the 6th gathering did not go well. It did not, well, did not go well for the car people. And they had reserved, they'd come to us, just like you're doing, asked for, asked for the opportunity to do this. We do it for them every year, and this was completely disruptive of their event. I appreciate that you've come to ask to follow the rules, our policies, if you want to use the courthouse grounds, this is how you do it. I don't know if we have a conflict on April, what, what, is it April 19th?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if there's a conflict or not. Nope, okay. See, this is how we, the boss says no conflict, so we've got no conflict.
Right.
And so, you want to be able to express your political feelings, and I, and I respect that, and I think the whole court respects that. And I take it that what you're really asking for us to do is to approve your gathering so you can come on that date.
Yes.
And to that end, I will make a motion that we allow the Hands Off Kerr County Democrats Organization to use the courthouse grounds on April the 19th as presented.
Second.
Got a second. Any other discussion?
Well, I'll just state that I respect your right under the First Amendment to assemble and protest, but I got to tell you, if there's any other events like occurred on April 6th, I'll be voting against you in future ones. It's just that simple. I mean, follow the process, and you've got to respect others.
And we will do that, sir. You have my word.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to vote against it because of April 6th. It's kind of one shot and done, you know? It's fooled me once, shame on you. Fooled me twice, shame on me.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Mr. Harris, that implies that the protesters acted in, in an illegal way or an improper way, in my opinion, when I'm hearing you say kind of disparaging remarks about the April 6th event. Initially, this, this was an idea of just a few friends getting together. We had no idea that 400 people would show up. I mean, that's, you have my word on that. We had no idea. And there's no, no video, there's no documentation, there's no photographs, that anyone who showed up to protest behaved in a violent way or threatening way, although that has been alleged. We do have, we do have some video evidence that, that counter protesters, if you will, people who disagreed with us, were acting in, you could interpret, somewhat provocative manner. And still, no one engaged violently, no one really, you know, turned, turned away against him. So, to kind of imply that the people who gathered, the American citizens who gathered on April the 6th here acted, you know, acted in any manner that was disruptive other than to the car show, which we acknowledge, but, you know, we were on the sidewalk.
This was not just a few friends that got together and decided to do that.
You're right.
This was, this was a very organized effort, it was a national effort, so that's just not true.
Here, I'm only speaking for Kerr County, because I, I know, I was in on the planning, and it, I can tell you, it never occurred to me that we would have 400 people. I, I, you just have to accept my word, not in Kerr County. I never accepted, I never expected that.
Can I, can I ask, why the courthouse, especially if you're going to have that kind of turnout where the, it's a real safety issue with people driving? Why not the park or somewhere else, where people can spread out? It's a lot safer publicly. That's what I have a problem with.
Again, when we thought it was going to be 25 people, it seemed like those were the busiest corners, and it seems, seems, that's where other protests have been in the past, or rallies, I like to use the word rally.
How many people do you expect for this event?
Less, because it's Easter weekend, less.
But it's Holy Week.
It is Holy Week.
Good time to protest.
Is it, are people bussed in?
Yes, sir.
I was there from 10:20 in the morning till, hmm, about 12:30. There was no buses, there was no, if there, if there were any buses in the area, it must have been related to Arcadia or something, but I would have noticed if a whole busload of people had arrived all at the same time. There was no, no buses.
There was no buses.
With handmade signs.
Yeah.
Well, let me wrap this up.
Yes.
I think what the takeaways from this request are, is when you want to come to the courthouse to protest, and I'm talking to the public as well as to your group, when you want to use the courthouse grounds, you need to come talk to us about it and let us know. There's different levels of usage. Sometimes we open the courthouse up for restrooms. We have to have more deputies here if we do that. We have to make arrangements for law enforcement. These are things that we need to know. And I understand, and we've had spontaneous protests here before, this is not the first one, trust me. But number one, check in with the county.
Yes, sir.
Number two, everybody ought to have the right to use the courthouse grounds to protest if that is their heart's desire. We need to do it orderly and with decorum, and it needs to be safe and peaceful.
Yes, sir.
And then the third takeaway that I've got on this is, since everybody has that right, I don't think it's right for this court to say, you can come and you can't, because then we start, we're taking partisan positions. And so, I did not attend your, your protest. I didn't know about it until, what, two days before, and we knew, we knew it was going to conflict with the car show, and we didn't know who to contact in your organization. So, we have forms to fill out, to go through maintenance department, and come back to us first to know what's going on. So, that's kind of where I think we are, and I think everybody, there are people in this room that may agree with you politically, and I'm sure there are people in this room that do not agree with you politically, but that does not affect your right. And so, for that reason, is there anything else to say before we vote? Okay? Those in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed, raise your hand. Those abstaining, raise your hand. So, what did we get?
Two, two.
Two, two and one.
Two, two and one? That means nothing happens. Right? I'm looking at the county attorney.
Yeah, I'd like to give y'all some little advice in this session.
You want us to take this under advisement?
Yes, sir.
We will take this under advisement. She wants to talk to us in executive session. We do that at the end of the meeting.
Yes, sir.
But if you'll leave your contact information with us, we'll get back with you, because that's probably going to be closer to lunchtime.
All right, sir. Is it not, I filled out y'all's form, and it has my name and phone number, I believe.
Okay, good. Okay.
I'll make sure, though.
Okay.
Okay?
But thank you for coming down.
Thank you for hearing.
Next item on the agenda is 1.2, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the procedure and format of cost sharing with Mandera and Gillespie Counties for Victim Services Department budget.
Noelle will give you a, I guess she already gave it to you, a copy of a spreadsheet, and hopefully I can explain it all to you and make it make. hopefully I can explain it all to you and make it make sense.
We got one, is there, is it only one sheet? Yeah.
We had pre, the court had previously assigned, uh, my office to take care of some housekeeping to get the other two counties, Gillespie and Banderas, to help in the cost sharing with victim services because they benefit from the services. Um, so that's what this is all about. Before I go on, I do want to introduce Cheryl, in case you didn't know, if you haven't put eyes on her, you know she's here, but you might not know a face with a name, but, uh, she is the part-time person in my office, so. Um, if you look at this, you can, up at the top, you see the budget actuals. So, if you look over at actual expenditures, basically that's what it costs us to have the program that year. So I took those numbers and I showed you, if we do it, if we bill, and I'm using the word bill, it's not the accounting word, but just for ease of use, if we ask those counties through, to pay based on number of people, so the heads we serve, okay, that's in blue. If you go down in green, that's a 25, 25, 50 split. So that gives Gillespie 50, Banderas 50, I mean 25, Gillespie 25, and us 50. And then in purple, you see it by population. So, I, what I'm asking of the court is to, I need to know how you want me to do it. And it had, I think, um, some had previously wanted to do it based on people. And I just want to point out to the court that part of the issue with that is going to be, those numbers will not be in until after the budget. So that means essentially you're gonna be in arrears each time. And so my suggestion is that we take the 2025, 2025, 25, 50 split and when I write the grant, like right now, I've written the grant, we'll have the budget here shortly for the year, and then I can give the counties an idea of what their cost is gonna be, and it'll be in their budget for the proper year. Um, if you look, the numbers are not that different. I mean, we're talking a 2,000-ish swing either way. Um, you know, I, I don't know how you feel about it, and that's what I need to find out in order to take the next step.
Well, let me kind of weigh in, kind of give some background. The 216th, at one point, was four counties, uh, in one judicial district. It's now down to two, which are Kerr and Gillespie. And the 198th, at one point, I think, had as many as seven counties, all the way up to Mason and, and, uh, up down to Rock Springs. Uh, and we've always had issues as to how to allocate the cost of running the district court and the district attorney's office for those districts, uh, especially when you have multi-counties like that. And when Mr. Harris and I came on the court, we learned that, uh, some of the things that the county does is because we've always done it that way. And, uh, when I asked, why, why did we do this on the basis of population? That's how it was decided, on the basis of population, at the latest census, so once every 10 years, we revisit how much each county contributes to the expenses of running that district, uh, which I did, I did think was fair. And, uh, we've talked about it, uh, and that, that's at the, that's at the court and the district attorney's level. Those are, those are the bigger expenses. This is a relatively manageable expense compared to theirs. We just had, we had a public defender's office, the regional public defender's office that, uh, Mr. Jones commented on, had a Zoom meeting on Friday. And when we moved the fiscal agency from Kerr County to Medina County, some of you may remember that, that, that process that we did, this was about three years ago. Medina County has an app, a program, that counts cases, actual cases, and so of the five counties, we get an actual case count at the end of every month, and we get a bill at the end of every month for the number of cases that we had on there. Uh, and it works very efficiently, and, uh, I don't think Mr. Jones knew that's the way we used to do it, but, uh, the, the, the monthly case count, we'd have to wait till we had accounting periods, like a quarter or something, before we could settle up on the, the number of cases. So what you're doing, I think, is admirable and necessary. They need to share in the expense of running this office. And how we go about doing that, I guess that's really what you're asking us to do today is to figure out how to do it.
Please.
Uh, but I can tell you that even though we have two district judges that sit in this courthouse, and one goes to Banderas and the other one goes to Gillespie, they're spending about half their time in those other counties, believe it or not. Uh, even, even though Banderas is half our size, uh, they still spend a lot of time over there. And vice versa in, in Gillespie County with all their recent growth, uh, that, that's kind of taken off. So, I've always been one to complain, and I appreciate Ms. Peter bringing this to us because, uh, I felt like Kerr County was always picking up more than our share. Uh, but I think what, what she's done here is to bring us the facts, the data, uh, for us to try to do something that is a little bit more fair. Uh, and just so you know, the way we split it up, uh, at the district court level right now, is I think it's about 25% from Banderas, 75% from Kerr County for the, the 198, and I think it's more like 2/3, 1/3 for Gillespie, even though they're spending equal amounts of time in those counties.
Do, do we have an ILA?
No.
With these other counties?
You know...
Were you able to find that?
We've always done it that way, I don't know...
Yeah.
I haven't seen an ILA.
Yeah, doesn't seem to me as, if we're gonna go, and, and I like this idea of the split, uh, but if we're gonna go with that split, it seems like we need an ILA in place.
Well...
Even if there is one, it's outdated, so I'm, I'm happy to work with Heather to get something...
My, my inclination is to try to be more factually accurate as to usage, and that is, uh, and, and, you know, just because you count heads doesn't mean you spend the same amount of time with every person. Some of these cases require a lot more attention. Uh, but I would rather tie it more to actual usage, if at all possible.
And I, that's why I'm looking on here, and I see Banderas, right?
Yeah.
Less population, more cases.
More cases.
Which surprised me considering Gillespie, larger population, and Fredericksburg, with all the drama that could come in your place. I know it's a lot of visitors there, a weekend in Fredericksburg, but still, if something happens there, it would come to you.
Correct. Uh, now, with the caveat that in the beginning, like in the crisis mode, if the Rangers or DPS is involved, many times it goes to their victim service first until it's indicted and then it comes to us. So they may have it for a month or two at the onset, but they typically call us, we have a pretty good working relationship with that office, so...
So why more in Banderas? Have you spent time in Banderas?
I'm just gonna say.
I just wanna ask publicly, 'cause I see you smiling, I ask the question.
I will tell you that's...
A demographic issue?
Um, it is a demographic issue as well as during a period of time that you're seeing here, that 35 and 36, the reason you're seeing that is, Banderas had an influx of murders. I'm serious, that, we had 10 murders in a very short period of time. A lot of it was out-of-county stuff that came into county, there was a, a whole host of reasons, some of it wasn't. Um, so that was kind of a, a strange thing that's never happened before, so, and I, I mean, maybe it'll happen again, we're pretty much on track to be up a little bit, and so, um, and Gillespie's up a little bit right now as well, so it's hard to say.
All right, I understand, I have in-laws that live there, I just wanted to hear from you.
Yeah.
Cherry Street.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Go to Warden's dock.
I mean, the, the downside of doing it on a case basis is presumably it changes a little every year. Where population, it's fixed for 10 years.
Okay.
The other thing I would say is, if you choose the population or the split, I think we could craft something in the ILA that says, if there's a reduction by 5%, 10%, whatever we want to use, or an increase, whichever way, that it will be revisited. So it's good for five years unless these things happen.
And by way of additional background information, uh, our Victim Services Department has been the product of grant generosity for over a decade, almost two decades, right?
Correct.
And that is that we get a grant to fund, to fund this office, and just because Kerr County gets the grant, and, and Kerr County does the fiscal agency for the two district courts, the district attorney's offices, uh, there wasn't a whole lot of concern about how we were, how, the other counties were contributing because it was mostly grant money. And the grant money was coming mainly through the federal, from, through the state government, from the federal government, uh, to do this. And so, we didn't, we didn't pay a whole lot of attention on how to allocate these expenses. And I think what, what, and thank you again for, for bringing this, 'cause it's something that, it's a discussion that needs to be made public. Uh, I think we need to do something for this year, for sure, and give us that year to sit down and work with the other stakeholders to see what is the best way to do this, is you can come back with a, a, hopefully a unanimous recommendation as to how to allocate these expenses for this department with our two sister counties next door. But we need to do something.
Definitely. And numbers aren't an issue, I mean, the, the bottom line is, is I'm, I, I would say I am. Cheryl is, I told you last time, the data person, she, she does the indictments every month. It's not a big deal if you want to do it monthly, if there's a way to do that. We're counting anyway. Um, it would be a lot more difficult for us to figure out time. It's all, I mean, we might be on a phone call for an hour with somebody from Banderas, I mean, it would just get very confusing. I think bodies populate, one of these is more doable, um, but I will do whatever the court asks, of course.
But, and, and I'll make a motion that we do this on a one-year trial basis, uh, and we come and we allocate it at this point, uh, by the number of persons served in the respective counties, that would be my motion, uh, 'cause that's, that's, that's the area, the way I would like to go with it eventually. Uh, now, this has become more important to us because we don't have full grant funding any longer. Uh, so now, now we're coming out of Kerr County's pocket and we need them to offer, they need to pay their fair share.
So if we do that, I will not have those numbers until October, so I would not be able to tell the county, it would, does that, this is so, I'm sorry, it's confusing, so...
Well, that needs to be fixed.
Well, but that's what's gonna have to happen between now and visiting this issue next year.
If we go that route.
Or you get everybody to agree to do it on the prior year account?
Well, then...
Yeah.
You know, it just makes it a lot simpler.
Yeah.
On the prior year account?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, so the, the only thing I can see that would be an issue is, you know, you could get a little bit of this...
Sure.
In the, the way it works, because if numbers go down and funding goes down, then, I mean, I...
We're, we're pretty sure funding will go down, right?
Yes.
So...
My goal is to keep it at the level it is.
I, I agree.
But I think eventually, yes, I think, like they told us we were gonna get 20% and I can tell the court, it's pretty, that's probably not gonna happen. I think you have this much of a chance of it happening, so we're gonna be flat-funded, just as we were this year.
If we did it off the prior year account, though, then we could go ahead and...
Yeah. Now, Ms. Peter, if I understand correctly, uh, I think Banderas County's voluntarily made some payments to us, haven't they?
I am, I'm not, I can't answer that question. I believe one time that I am aware of they did, one time, I am not sure of any...
Well, that, that, that just confirms that they understand that we're carrying the load here.
They do, and I have spoke, um, to Judge Evans and he, just get me the information, we're good.
But I, I would like to tie it more to the actual case counts.
Okay.
And I know we don't have, we won't have definitive information on that until the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
And we can take last year's case count...
Yeah.
Okay.
And just use that as a basis. And the reason I would like to do it that way...
Okay.
Is to get away from this population thing every 10 years, which is grossly unfair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Works for me.
I'd go with that.
So, is that a second?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion, a second?
Okay.
Uh, do this on a case count, based on last year's numbers.
Obviously, it could all change depending on the feedback we get from Banderas and Gillespie.
Shouldn't, shouldn't somebody from the court be talking to their court about that rather than Pam? I mean, not to be rude about it, but I mean, you're, you're...
Trust me, I'm good, he, whatever y'all want to do, I am, okay.
I was gonna volunteer you.
You're, you're the liaison, so...
I am victim liaison.
Excellent.
I wasn't meaning it like that.
You walked into it, buddy.
But, but Pam can be there for the numbers and stuff, but I think we need representatives of the court talking to these courts. The judge is the perfect match for that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
It really is, I mean, you...
'Cause you know these numbers and know the processes and stuff very well.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Judge Galloway.
Yeah, no, you are the best.
Just when I thought you were gonna get it.
But I do like the fair share discussion.
Yeah. Well, but I think if we're gonna do this, we probably ought to include you as the liaison commissioner and you as the victim coordinator, and I will head it up and take the lead.
All right.
Great.
Y'all are fun.
All right. So, is that the motion, are we revising it?
Pardon?
Joy's got some information that might be helpful.
Come on up.
Gotta go.
Ah, you might not have volunteered that if you'd known that, huh?
Now you're on record.
Well, the people at home have to see and hear what we do.
Ah, no.
Both Gillespie and Banderas already contribute some to victim services. It's not a lot, uh, but I don't know what it's based on either, myself. I would have to get with Tanya for sure to see what it's based on.
And, and we'll keep, we'll roll you right into the loop on this thing, but, uh, for the time being, we're gonna take it to the other two counties and propose to do it on a case count basis, historical case count basis. Okay, any other discussion?
What's the motion?
He's amended.
We got a first and a second, but what was the exact motion?
The amended motion is that we, uh...
I thought it was the number of persons served by county prior year count.
Correct. But we have to go to the respective counties and ask them to make that contribution, that's, that's where we go.
Okay.
Based on last year's...
And we're gonna base this, the, the initial ask will be on the basis of last year's numbers, actual numbers, so that we hopefully will continue the conversation on actual numbers. And I will tell you, in the PDO, it works smooth as glass...
Okay.
Every month.
All right, good.
Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl, we're getting these numbers.
We have a timed item at 9:15.
Right on track.
That ship sailed. Let's, let's go ahead and take item 1.7, which is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on recommendations of War Memorial Committee to add two names to the War Memorial via previously adopted criteria, which was court order number 32930. Names to be added are Charles Victor Chuck Komka and Javier Gonzalo Paredes. Ms. Sanchez.
Good morning. Um, thankfully, someone brought this to our attention. Um, both of them graduated from Ingram Tom Moore and unfortunately gave the ultimate sacrifice during the conflict. Uh, they do meet the criteria that's set in the court order, um, they, they meet more than two, but since two is the minimum, um, they meet number three and four. Um, so, would like permission to get their names added to the War Memorial. Um, I did call a couple of places to get a quote on how much that engraving would cost. I don't have that as of yet, um, so I wanted to ask a couple of things. I wanted to see if one, would we be able to accept donations, if there was anybody who wanted to donate to pay for that? And two, um, I did ask if we had any money that was donated from, uh, jury duty to VSO, which right now it's $122, so I was going to ask if that could be moved to pay for that, or at least contribute to it. And then in the future, when we do budget, I'll ask for an additional line item, so we'll at least have money to the side if we ever need to add additional names. So we'll at least have money to the side if we ever need to add additional names. And then if you have any questions about the history of it, I have my guru Gary here that has no problem coming up, right Gary? Just in case.
He's slicking down, trying to... But I know he's there.
But Gary's, but Gary has been through this since the beginning, so just, I know we don't have the same commissioners' court, and it was before I started working here. So just in case we had any questions, Gary's here as well. I do believe there's a printout of kind of a little bit of a history of them in your packet, but I am more than willing, I will read it if you'd like me to. It's only a couple of sentences per person, if you prefer, to y'all.
Jenna, I just have two questions.
Yes, sir.
How often do we add names to the War Memorial?
So I will be honest with you, sir, this is my first time since I've been here.
Yeah, I don't recall this coming before my two years.
I believe it, I'll have to defer to Gary, who's the expert.
First time.
First time.
Since I think the War Memorial actually was created.
Yeah.
We corrected one, I know that.
Yes, it was just Billy Butler, which was the spelling of the name.
My second question is, it's been a while since I looked at the memorial closely, but how much space is available for additional names?
We do for this conflict, we do. I don't, I couldn't tell you the exact amount, but there's enough to add their names, yes, sir.
Not a problem.
Yeah, both these guys were serving in the surge in Iraq. Looks like they were killed. One was a CB, was killed on a route, I think on the IED, and the other guy seems to be killed in fighting in Baghdad. So, yeah, they're legit, from my perspective.
Yes, sir.
Good. Dr. Templeton? You signed up to speak?
Well, I think my colleague here did a great job in just letting everybody know what was going on. And I didn't realize that you guys had information on these gentlemen, and you have that in front of you, right? So, I will not read that now, just to say that they were both...
Would you please read it, please?
Sure.
It's important.
My name is Bobby Templeton, and I am the superintendent at Ingram ISD, and I come before you today to advocate for the students at Ingram Tom Moore High School. As you know, we believe in service and values that make this country the greatest nation on earth. You have two names before you for consideration for the Veterans Memorial. We think that both of these names deserve to be on there. The first is Charles Victor Compa, 1990 ITM grad. Charles was a Naval Construction Battalion 18th Detachment 618 member in Billings, Montana. He and four Marines died when their Humvee hit a roadside bomb in the western province of Al Enbar in 2006. After graduating from high school, he joined the Navy and served for five years, and he enlisted in the reserves in Montana after that. While he was with us, he played varsity football and ran cross-country, and my staff that were there when he was there said he was an outstanding young man. The second is Javier Paredes, a 2002 ITM grad who came to Ingram to escape, from what I understand, his horrific abuse in San Antonio. He was removed from his home by CPS and placed at the Hill Country Youth Ranch, where he attended school with us. He endured severe childhood abuse and neglect, spending time in foster care after being removed from his family, and the staff at the youth ranch described him as happy, determined, and extremely proud of his Army service, noting that he listed the ranch as his next of kin in military records. After he died, his platoon sergeant said he was the best medic I've ever seen. He was fearless when it came to saving others on the battlefield. He was posthumously awarded the Purple Heart and the Bronze Star for actions on the battlefield, and my staff that were there when he was there say that he was also an outstanding young man and certainly deserving. We feel that we owe it to these families to add them to our Kirk County Veterans Memorial, and we would certainly appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I feel it incumbent, and as an honored duty, to make a motion that we recommend that the War Memorial Committee add these two names to our War Memorial. Charles Victor Chuck Compa and Javier Gonzalo Paredes. Their names will live forever.
That is, sir.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you not only behalf of our school, but on behalf of all the youth who've served this great nation. Thank you very much.
Okay, since we seem to be off schedule on everything, why don't we take a five-minute break and come back at 10 o'clock, and we will try to get back on schedule.
Court, come back to order. Normally, we have some timed items at 10 o'clock which would have to take precedent over the docket. But we don't have any of those today. We have a timed item at 10:45. So we'll go back and continue the agenda where we left off, which would be 1.3. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to allow Tybee High School to use Flat Rock Park, Dog Park area only, to host the cross-country track meets on August 15, September 27, October 8, and without rain-out dates of October 9, 10, and 11. Mr. Taylor here?
No, he's not. In fact, I had a conversation with him on the phone yesterday.
Okay.
So he's not going to be personally involved in this. I think there... Tybee is going through some changes and are going to have a new cross-country coach here shortly. But he asked it, if at all possible, the court consider it so that these dates are locked in for the new coach. You know, and he's provided a fair bit of support that there's a lot of benefit that comes from this, both in terms of, you know, our local participants and the visitors from outside the county that come for these events. So as a result, you know, and of course then it helps the incoming cross-country coach to know that these dates are locked in. And that will be a great benefit, not only to Tybee High School, but even some of the other folks. I've been getting emails from people outside of Kerr County asking and encouraging the Commissioners' Court to go ahead and continue the use of this facility, which apparently there are only a few that are good facilities for cross-country meets. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we allow Tybee High School to use the... I guess it's the southern portion of the Flat Rock Park to host cross-country track meets on August 15, September 27, and October 8.
I'll second your motion, sir.
I've got a goofy question.
Yep.
What... It's got only the Dog Park portion. What establishes this as a Dog Park? Just a sign? Or have we established that as a Dog Park or what? Because I have no clue.
We always have. We've always done it.
Yeah.
Referenced that way, I mean...
That's why I was curious, why we're not just say in the park and we're talking about...
A certain area.
I think it got named before you and I got here.
Yeah, I'm sure. We need a Jonathan in on this one, but for historical...
Certainly not an official name, nor should it be.
So there's nothing that's technically established?
No. There are signs of. Flat Rock Park. Well, dogs are allowed. I mean, it's that simple.
I told you it was a goofy question.
Yes, it was. But we do have a motion and a second to approve Tybee High School's use of Flat Rock Park Lake to host cross-country track events on August 15, September 27, and October 8, with backup dates of 9, 10, and 11. Is that included?
It should be.
Okay. I'll include that. I'm in my motion to include the...
I'll second that motion.
I would love for us to get enough rain to where we actually have to use one of those. All right.
Any other discussion? Again, we've always made this available for the cross-country tracking. And it's an event that is really liked.
Has a lot of positive impact on our community and our kids and surrounding communities.
Okay, so those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.4. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to name the county facility located at 550 Earl Garrett and order signage for same. Shane Evans.
Good morning, gentlemen. I do have a couple of recommendations, but anything from the Commissioners' Court would be appreciated. I do understand that Commissioner Holt has a recommendation for the naming of the building.
I do.
Anyhow, there are two that I have. And we shouldn't call it the Kerr County Annex because it's actually the building next to us. That is the Kerr County Annex. After the new building, it was called the Kerr County Annex. So with two names that I have, one is Kirk... Or I'm sorry, Earl Garrett Kerr Annex, which I think is not a bad name. Then the second name is the North Street Kerr Annex. But if we go with that, that could be kind of confusing because the address is 550 Earl Garrett. So... And originally, we never really have had a name for the building. Unofficially, we called it the Public Defender's Office, but what, they've been gone now for two years? So we do, and we do have two county agencies in there right now, so...
And they may change, so I think we should stay away from, you know...
Correct.
A name that implies who occupies it at this time. But go back to... You said we can't count it? Or what is currently the Kerr Annex?
This building next to us, where the tax office, the clerk's office...
This is all built new over here, and they call that the Annex. This is the old courthouse, and that's the Annex.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
Yes.
Never referred to that.
So calling it the Kerr Annex could be kind of confusing.
To me, this all is the courthouse.
I have a good solution.
Yeah, excellent solution.
So it has a good ring. I want to thank the Ruths, Kenneth and Tamara Ruth, for bringing this to my attention. Just happened in a conversation this week. I recommend the Burton Building. It's got a ring to it. Colonel Ali Burton, U.S. Air Force, born and raised at 829 Earl Garrett Street, and is a legend in our community. He served in the U.S. Army, U.S. Air Force for three wars, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam. As the second lieutenant, he was held in captivity for 10 months during the Korean War and suffered significant torture, but came out a stronger person. He was then the pilot of F-80s, F-84s, F-86 Sabre Fires. This guy's a fighter pilot. Pretty cool. 69 Squadron, 58 Bomber Group. There was a very large parade for him upon his return. Many of us probably weren't there, but it was here on Earl Garrett Street for his large parade and through Kerrville. He retired as an Air Force in 1970. He's 100 years old and still alive.
I went to his birthday last year.
And I... Hopefully, if this vote goes well, I'll go see him on this. But he still drives at 100 years old. Lives on a 500-acre ranch at Highway 41 and 83 now. He's a recent widower, very sad recently, and time is precious for him. And it would just be an honor to name that, especially because our Veterans Service Office is there. The Burton Building.
Make that a motion.
The Building.
I'd like to make that a motion that we name it the Burton Building.
Second, Ali Burton.
It's an annex to it.
The Burton Annex? To me, it... I like the idea to acknowledge, you know, Burton.
It could be Kerr County Burton Building.
Burton Building versus Burton Annex?
I would just like Burton somewhere in the name based upon his incredible service and...
I think Ali Burton.
I agree with that.
That's true.
I'm even okay with Ali Burton Annex, and then it has a better ring to it, actually.
I agree.
Okay, Ali Burton Annex?
Yep.
If you want to rescind your motion.
I will rescind the motion and...
amend.
You're amended to be the Ali Burton Annex.
I like that.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to name the 550 Earl Garrett Building the Ali Burton Building?
No, Annex.
Annex. Ali Burton Annex. Any discussion?
Is it A-L-L?
A-L-L-I-E.
Yeah, I-E.
Mm-hmm.
I like it.
And he is Lucy Burton's father.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Those in favor, say aye or raise your hand. Unanimous? Thank you. Moving on to item 1.5. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to accept donations to the Kerr County Animal Services totaling $120 for the month of March 2025. Reagan Givens.
Good morning. As you can see there, these are cash donations, which... A $20 cash donation and then a $100 totaling $120.
Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept donations from Kerr County Animal Services totaling $120 as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.6. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to accept and recognize Kerrville Pets Alive donations to the Kerr County Animal Services and Kerr County Animals totaling $17,057.65 from January 1, 2025 through March 28 of 2025. Reagan Givens.
Yeah, so this is something that Kerrville Pets Alive and Karen was working on, which we're still kind of trying to figure out exactly how often we'll come to you guys and let you know what they've done, probably quarterly, but we can change that if we need to. But you can see here, there's medical care, and these are fees that are paid to veterinarians for animals that are in our custody, some of which, you know, in the past, these animals, you know, they may have had to have been euthanized if it weren't for them putting forth this money. And that was $12,232.65. They provide a lot of cat and dog vaccines, which was $1,250. Adoption fee support, which actually that totaled $3,200, which I think that was... Came in last... This last year, but we still have some of that left. And then microchips for pet reclaims and walk-in pets was $375 for that grand total right there. And Karen, if you want to say anything about any of this, go into more detail if you guys want. You're welcome to.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. And as you know, we have a continuing great relationship and partnership with Kerr County Animal Services. We spend about 40 to 60 hours volunteer work with Kerr County Animal Services, either at the shelter or facilitating rescue adoption or adoptions, communicating with Kerr County Animal Services just to support what they do. And they do a lot, and we thank you for everything that you do. We, again, continue to sponsor anything that they need as far as reclaim goes, health and safety at that shelter with vaccines. And it came up a couple of meetings ago. We did purchase some cat repellers, so I know we have some cat issues in Kerr County. And we do a lot with spay and neuter and vaccines for those animals. But we do have some. We have not had one person reach out to us yet for those, so let... Reach out to me if y'all need any of those. We want to thank the county commissioners and animal control for allowing us to do some of what we call our Pay It Forward services. I'm not sure if you're aware, but now we identify cats and dogs that are up for owner reclaim that we would consider kind of high-risk animals, specifically dogs. We don't want to be another San Antonio where we've got vicious dogs running around the community. So dogs that would be adopted out for breeding or fighting or more at risk for biting, we are able to remove those animals from the shelter, get them spayed and neutered, vaccinated, which we fund, board them, and then bring them back to animal control. So if those animals are adopted out, they're not able to reproduce, and their behavior should be better. So we thank you. That's something that is new, and we appreciate that proactive thought on that. And just want to encourage, we have so many programs. We have low-cost spay and neuter clinics that are every month. We have four more, I think, for the rest of the year. And that's our way of allowing the community to adopt animals, take care of their pets, keep pets off the street. And even though we get surrender calls every single day that are directed to us most of the time, it's proactive effort, and we just appreciate that the court and animal control is working with us on that. And encourage the community, plan for your pets. We get so many calls from people going into the facilities, change of lifestyle, and just try to think about it. If you plan for your family, plan for your pet, reach out to us, and we'll do whatever we can. That.
Karen, y'all have come a long way.
We have, yes, sir. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Any other questions about our donations or...
And with that, I would like to make the motion to accept this gracious donation to our animal control. Thank you.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the contribution of $17,057.65 to the Kerr County Animal Services. Any discussion?
Well, it's recognizing that these contributions have occurred from January 1 through March 28, so it's not just a one contribution, but...
Right, yes, sir. And again, we're working on that with Tanya about reporting quarterly. And it just came to our attention that there are a recognition of donations made to other entities, and why not go ahead and recognize ours as well, so...
Well, we definitely want to recognize Kerrville Pets Alive for all the good work that you're doing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Moving on to item 1.8. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to ratify and confirm acceptance of grant funding from FY 2024 Operation Stone Garden Grant, Project Valverde 2024, OPSG, Grant Number 4899303, with the amount of $154,000. Lieutenant Gage.
Good afternoon, or good morning, I guess, still. Yeah, if we would... We're awarded the grant, Operation Stone Garden fiscal year 2024, on the amount of $154,000. Breakdown for that grant is about $50,000 in overtime for deputies for Operation Stone Garden, and the 104 remaining is actually for computer software for the digital forensic lab. That's very important for us, for that money, that funding for the digital forensic lab. I know Commissioner Jones attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago, so we're going to get another year of funding for that. You know, we service multiple counties with that software right now. And man, especially for the prosecution, for those phones and all those computer stuff, that's very detrimental to their prosecution. So very fortunate that we got that funding again for this. So I just ask your approval to accept the funds.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to approve accepting...
I did approve that... I did attend that meeting. I'm going to tell you, Jason and you both did a wonderful job, the way y'all presented all that, especially with the way you're looking forward, because we don't know if those funds are going to dry up at some point, and they're putting together an ILA with other counties to where we can keep that as a focal point for this type of effort. So excellent job, guys.
Okay, so this is motion to ratify and confirm acceptance of the grant funding on Operation Stone Garden as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.9. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign a master cooperative purchasing agreement between North Carolina Sheriff's Association, Inc., Kerr County Sheriff's Office, and Kerr County, Texas pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code. Lieutenant Gage.
All right. I was asking for the court's approval for this master cooperative purchasing agreement. So when we started looking at purchasing for the county, and I know we brought this up before with sole source purchasing, so there's basically three ways that the county can purchase stuff that's over $50,000. So one would be a competitive bid, which Roden Bridge does a lot on that stuff. The other option is the sole source, where we produced that before, where a specific manufacturer... They're the only ones that produce it. And the other is through a cooperative agreement. We use... Currently, we use Sourcewell for the county, which is basically what it is with that cooperative. They take the brunt of it. They bring in all these... They develop these contracts. They bring in all these bids for that as well. We also use Texas Buy Board as well as one of our cooperatives. GSA is not necessarily cooperative, but it's a stream that we can go to as well. And DIR, which is a state, through state contracts, is what we use. With this cooperative, it's going to kind of expand our national purchasing ability using the... It's through Virginia's Sheriff's Association, Texas Association as well, Sheriff's Association in North Carolina. So they developed a cooperative, and it gives us that opportunity to use other vendors. Big deal, especially with this, is one of the vendors that we're looking at for our in-car computer project and things like that, that vendor actually uses that, as well as our ticket writers that we're using out of a grant through ACOG from last year. So... But it's going to expand that as well. So it'll open up the ability for us to look at different technology vendors, vehicle purchasing, if we need to go that route. So there's... In there is heavy equipment, so... I know the county attorney, she's reviewed the contract, and she said there's no issues. Am I right, Heather?
Yes.
Okay, so... But it's pretty important going forward with this because of our vendors that we're looking at.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second. Got a motion and a second, so...
Question. Scott, why North Carolina Sheriff's Association?
You know...
Are there others?
Well, so it's...
Why isn't there a Texas?
Yeah, so Texas Sheriff's Association is a partner with them as well. They're... North Carolina is the main head, is the hub of it. So Virginia Sheriff's Association and as well as Texas is in it. So yeah, it's kind of weird when you looked at it. They're just the ones that spearheaded the project to open it up nationally for everybody. So...
Okay.
But, you know, under the government code, we can enter into that co-op with other state organizations as well, so...
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? And all those in favor of entering to this master cooperative purchasing agreement with the North Carolina Sheriff's Association as presented, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda is 1.10. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve lease renewal for the Kerr County Treasurer's Office Pitney Bowes postage machine and have the county judge sign statements. Ms. Olin?
Yes. She asked me to present her items today. She's at the Capitol today, sort of unexpectedly. Toward the end of last week, she got asked to come speak. So I'm here for her three items today. And I have approved... I have reviewed and approved this contract with Pitney Bowes for postage.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the Treasurer's Office renewing the lease on their Pitney Bowes postage machine as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. You've got the other two too, also.
Yes, sir.
1.11. Consider discuss to take appropriate action on amending the Healthy County Wellness Contact Designation Form.
This item is to change the designation to Cindy Hernandez, who is in HR, from a former employee.
Okay, I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the contact designation change as presented. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.12. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to accept the juror donations to Kerr County Veterans Services Office totaling $122 for the second quarter.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve accepting the funds donated to the Kerr County Veterans Service Office as presented. Any discussion?
Put your hand down.
Ready to vote, sorry. Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is 1.13. Consider discuss and update matters related to the Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission. Mr. Faces.
Thank you. Okay. Well, our last meeting with Kendall County in the Subregional Planning Commission was on March 28. That meeting was recorded via Microsoft Teams, and it's available on the website. The draft minutes were also posted on the website, so those are available, and we will be approving those in our next meeting, hopefully. We also had a Teams meeting on March 28 between myself, Commissioner Holt, and two representatives from ERCOT, one of which was Doug Phone, Assistant General Counsel. And they kind of, in response to our coordination letter, wanted to kind of talk and explain how they saw their role, which... Well, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that later. But anyway, it was a good meeting, and we're going to continue to ask them to formally come for a coordination meeting with our Chapter 391 S.R.P.C. After that, we then received a response to our request for a coordination meeting from Public Utilities Commission of Texas. And basically, their response says that they do not plan for or approve the connection of any power generators to the grid. You know, and that's very similar to what LCRA told us when we asked them for a coordination meeting. So what we're finding is that kind of everybody that we're trying to make some progress with and hold coordination meetings with, from TCEQ to Public Utilities Commission to ERCOT and LCRA, are all basically telling us that they don't play any role in an approval process for a battery energy storage system to be connected to the grid. In fact, what we're hearing is that they are obligated to indiscriminately approve any power generator who wants to connect to the grid. Now, it's an interesting comment that's been made there, you know, because certainly a battery energy storage system's not a power generator. They don't generate any power. They just take it from the grid and then give it back with some small loss. So it's a commercial venture, and we're trying to justify it based on somehow stabilizing grid power. So we will continue to pursue having coordination meetings, you know, but I guess what this also emphasizes, if they're all going to point a finger and say there's no accountability and they don't do anything to ensure the safety of these facilities and our grid, then, boy, I guess we need to spend all the more time encouraging our state legislators, legislators to do something about it. And there are a lot of bills that are being proposed, and I hope will come out of various committees. But frankly, too little is being proposed on this issue. And we still aren't really seeing where the counties and the communities that are likely to be affected are having any kind of authority. So interesting, and I guess then what this is forcing counties to do is to rely on fire codes. And that's certainly what, in particular, Van Zant County has done. In fact, they issued a... I think it was a district attorney issued a stay to a best developer on the basis of non-compliance with the various fire codes. Specifically, I think it's NFPA 855, but there are others that are also included. So, you know, that's certainly something that we can and will be looking at, whether we want to follow suit. We'll also be monitoring very closely the success or lack thereof of Van Zant County, and we'll see what they're doing. I believe I shared that... Jody shared that information with the court in terms of what Van Zant's doing. So everything is very fluid. We are having our next meeting this Wednesday. It's Wednesday morning at 10:00 a.m. here in Kerr County Courthouse. And we will have representatives from TCEQ in attendance, although my phone was ringing from one of the concerned individuals. So we'll... I hope they're still on for this meeting. So that will be kind of our first coordination meeting. And I believe that there's quite a few people who might be interested in attending this one to hear directly from the source. a few people who might be interested in attending this one to hear directly from the source. And I think that the one thing that TCEQ, I hope, will be looking at a lot closer is there is a, a bill in the House, I believe it's House Resolution, Continuing Resolution 121, that if it passes, it would declare the Edwards Aquifer as a state treasurer and, and put an onus on TCEQ to do everything possible to protect the Edwards Aquifer from contamination. So we, we'll definitely have some discussion about that and what TCEQ might be trying to do if that passes to fulfill that obligation. So again, that meeting is 10 o'clock here in the courthouse. And we'll see how that goes. I guess that's all I really have. Any questions? Any comments from the public?
Need to make sure that they draw the distinction between the Edwards Aquifer and the Edwards Plateau.
Sure. Well, that's not for us.
I know, but I'm saying that bill that's out there is a whole lot different because we're the Edwards Plateau, not the Edwards Aquifer.
Sure.
So, just to, just, just to ask.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and there are various different groups. And I'm going to forget the specific names of the different alliances and so forth that.
Oh, yeah.
You probably know better than I do. But anyway, you know, they're pushing some of this stuff and wanting to get involved. And we've invited them to attend as well. So, because I think it is important that it's not just the Edwards Aquifer over San Antonio. It, it's all of these aquifers. And, and our aquifers, every bit is sensitive and is important to our future.
And Headwaters has a moratorium on, on permitted wells on ours.
Right.
And they have had for many years. And so it's already protected from permitted wells.
Yeah, but that's just the Edwards, I guess.
Yeah.
And, you know, the Trinity is every bit is important.
Sure.
If not more.
Sure, absolutely.
When we look at.
You're correct.
What's providing the water to most of us.
Right.
Anything else to report?
No, sir.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is 1.14, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to determine whether to allow the retail fireworks permit holders to sell fireworks to the public beginning May 1, 2025 and ending at midnight, May 5, 2025, in celebration of Cinco de Mayo. I put this on the agenda?
I'm usually the braumer here on that and I say we can pass on it.
Okay. So we'll take no action. Let's go on to the next agenda item, which is 1.15, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to appoint a member of Commissioners Court or designate a person to perform an investigation under Section 751.005 of the Texas Health and Safety Code for the purpose of determining if the minimum standards for ensuring public safety and order as prescribed by law will be maintained under the application for permit for the Kerrville Folk Festival being held from May 22 to June 8 of 2025. This is, and there will be a hearing on the mass gathering permit set for April the 28th at 8:30 here in the courtroom.
I nominate Jeff Holt.
They're taking turns.
Who, who did the last one?
He did.
Yes, sir.
I second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to, Mr. Holt to assist with the mass gathering permit.
Discussion will not be my first investigation and it probably will not be my last, so I accept this.
Are you volunteering for the one after that?
I, no comment. I would just say it's an important thing and it's part of our process.
That's right.
There you go.
Thank you. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, we still got a little bit of time. Let's go down to 1.16, consider to discuss to take appropriate action for the court to authorize, Mr. Jones and Mr. Harris, to authorize and approve road closures associated with the reconstruction of Bear Creek Road during April through October of this year.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Your Honor.
The Kirk County Bear Creek Road Reclamation Reconstruction Project was awarded to J3 Company LLC on March 10, 2025. The project consists of 2.3 miles of road and drainage work. The remaining 2.1 miles of Bear Creek Road will be repaired, reclaimed, reconstructed by the Kirk County Road and Bridge Department in conjunction with this project. When complete, all 4.4 miles of Bear Creek Road will be resurfaced with a two-course chip seal by the Road and Bridge Department. At times during the project, closing the road will become necessary. It is requested that Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Harris be individually authorized to approve temporarily, or temporary road closures associated with this project. The county engineer requests the court authorize Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Harris to authorize and approve road closures associated with reconstruction of Bear Creek Road during April through October of 2025, which is Precincts 1 and Precinct 4.
I move for approval.
I second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, Mr. Harris and, Mr. Jones.
Yep.
To approve any necessary closes for Bear Creek Road during the construction process as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 1.17, consider to discuss to take appropriate action regarding a final plat for Toribio subdivision and rescind Court Order Number 40095, Precinct 3.
This proposal subdivides a 7.31 acre tract into two lots. Lot 1 will be 1.446 acres with 100 feet fronting on Greenwood Drive. Lot 2 will be 5.877 acres with over 200 feet fronting on Greenwood Drive. This track was previously divided without plating, and so the court approved a resolution reciting the fact of non-compliance and failure to secure a final plat and approved that by Order Number 40095. This was on July 10 of 2023. Since this proposed plat will correct matters and bring the subdivision into compliance, Order Number 40095 should be rescinded as well. The county engineer requests the court consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding a final plat for Toribio subdivision and rescind Order Number 40095 in Precinct 3.
Make a motion.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to approve the final plat for Toribio subdivision as presented and rescinding Order Number 40095. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item 1.18, consider to discuss to take appropriate action regarding a possible change order from U E S for material testing at the new animal control facility. Anybody here on that one? I think that's a Charlie item.
It is.
So why don't we just pass it?
Please, dude, this one takes a lot of discussion. He needs to be here for that.
So we're going to pass that one for the time being. Moving on to item 1.19, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve an auction agreement with Trey Garrett, Garrett Realty and Auction. Ms. Hopper?
Submitted for approval is an auction agreement with Trey Garrett, Garrett Realty and Auction. This is for an auction to be held on May 10, 2025, at Kirk County Road and Bridge property located on Spur 100 behind the ball fields. We call it the pipe yard. All vehicles, equipment, and materials that will be placed for auction have been surplus through Commissioners Court. The county attorney has reviewed this agreement. At this time, I asked the Commissioners Court for their approval of the auction agreement with Trey Garrett, Garrett Realty and Auction as presented and have the county judge sign the same.
I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second to approve the auction agreement with Trey Garrett, Garrett Realty and Auction as presented. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is 1.20, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve the agreement for the storage of Kirk County-owned materials and equipment on private property located at 2325 Junction Highway.
We have received approval from the owner of the above referenced property to store county-owned materials and equipment at this location. This property is located in Precinct 4. It's, if you know where Kirk County Credit Union is, on the corner where you pick up Acadia Loop, it's the property to the left of it. It's, it's an open piece of property. We are here to request court approval for Road and Bridge to utilize this property for our storage needs. And this form is something that the county attorney quite a few years ago drew up for us to sign to put our materials there. It's a temporary thing, but we're just following the protocol.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve an agreement for the storage of Kirk County-owned materials and equipment at private property located at 2325 Junction Highway as presented. Any discussion?
Yeah. Kelly, is there any cost to the county associated with the use of this property?
No.
Is this anywhere tied to the building and construction of the animal controls? Do you have some storage of equipment?
No.
Okay.
No, it probably is, it's probably more up in Precinct 4 area for seal coat and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah. It's getting harder and harder to find places to store. So when we do find somebody that's willing to help us out for a few months, I'm pretty grateful.
And we're always looking for more in, in other precincts as well.
Yes.
Anything progressing on using the, some of the property out at the West Kirk Annex or?
Oh, yeah. There's plans being drawn up.
Yes.
Which, by the way, our swap is scheduled to close in April. Talked to Dr. Timperman about it today.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the storing the equipment on the private property located at 2325 Junction Highway as presented. Any, any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 1.21, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to surplus a copier from County Court at Law.
Yes, we'd like to surplus this. It's been in storage since 2020. So it has not been used.
I move for approval.
I second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve surplusing the copier from County Court at Law as presented. Any discussion?
Is this the one that's over in the old youth detention?
It's been upstairs in the district courts.
Oh, sitting up there in your valuable real estate area.
Yes.
Got it.
They, they've been using it when they were doing criminal cases up there.
Okay.
Okay. Next, okay. We didn't vote on it?
No.
Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.22, consider to discuss to take appropriate action regarding engagement letter with Gabriel, is that Reder?
Roder.
Roder, Smith and Company for the other post-employment benefits valuation and Gatsby 75 valuation report for fiscal years 2025 and 2026.
Okay, this is Gabriel Roder, Smith and Company have a shared service agreement with North Central Texas Council of Governments to provide other post-employment benefits actual values. This agreement allows for two additional two-year renewal periods. The second renewal period was assigned, was signed this year and extended the agreement until June 2027. Master agreement with Gabriel Roder, Smith and Company to provide other post-employment benefits actual values to Kirk County was signed in 2018. This agreement is based on the North Central Texas Council of Governments agreement. The agreement letter under consideration today is for the O P E D evaluation and Gatsby 75 valuations reports for fiscal years ending 2025 and 2026. The engagement letter was reviewed by the county attorney.
Move for approval.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve the engagement agreement letter with Gabriel Roder, Smith and Company as presented here today. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Joey, is this comparable cost-wise to what we've been doing in the past?
Yes. The cost of the service is $12,330. Last year, Kirk County paid $11,600.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item 1.23, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve the TAC, the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Pool interim Cobra Administration Agreement. Ms. Apata?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. So TAC is going to take over the Cobra Administration. Previously, we were doing it through Blue Cross Blue Shield. I'm actually really excited for this change. I think it's going to be easier, more employee-friendly, or ex-employee-friendly because it's for employees who leave. But it'll also be easier for us to keep up with it. So I'm excited for this change. So I'm asking the court to approve the agreement. It is an interim because our, we're midway through our plan year and we will have a new agreement 10-1, which is when our actual plan year starts. Yes, Heather has reviewed it.
Sylvia, who was doing it previously?
Up Blue Cross Blue Shield.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve TAC and the H E B P, the, it's Health and Employee Benefits Pool interim Cobra Administration Agreement as presented. Any discussion?
Exactly what I said.
There being none, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
We're back on schedule, it looks like. Item 1.24, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to rescind Court Order Number 41200 regarding electronic recordings for court records and approve a new order that applies only to Commissioners Court records. And after being advised by the county attorney, she reminded me politely, by the way.
I tried.
That the probate docket, the mental health docket, and juvenile docket that I preside over are all state dockets. They're not county dockets. And we don't have any authority.
Okay.
And we do over this room.
I get it.
So what we're doing is eliminating the other three from that order and leaving this one.
Okay.
It's housekeeping.
Got a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay. It is, why don't we take about a 90-second recess, everybody kind of move around and get, get the new, the TAC people ready to present. We'll start back at 10:45. Start back at 10:45. And Paseo de Paz. Hunter Simon.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Tyler Hunt and I'm with Involve. Really appreciate y'all allowing me to come here and to present this to each of you. We have a few slides on, on the screen where I've put together just some brief information about each of the properties. If you can go to the next slide there, this is just an overview of each of the properties. Heritage Oaks, which was built in 2001, has 76 units. And Meadows is, was built in 1999 and has 72 units. Paseo de Paz was built around 2006 and has 76 units. Heritage Oaks and the Meadows are next door to each other. And then Paseo de Paz is just a little bit further apart, but our plan is to combine all three of the properties into one tax exempt financing. So we can, once those are awarded, we would be able to apply for tax credits and use those tax credits to rehab each of the properties at one, at one time. We have worked with Whitestone Construction and DNA Workshop as an architect. And Whitestone is the general contractor that we've worked with on a lot of different projects where we've rehabbed them in the state of Texas. So those are our planned partners for these properties as well. It involved, I work, the company I work for, we're the owner of the properties, but we're also the management company and the developer. So we would be in, working through this process, through the development process, and then we would continue to own and manage going forward. So we really want to be able to get this rehab completed for the property and for our residents. And so, and we would be in, in this for the long haul as we're going to be managing and owning going forward and want to make sure that we are taking care of the, the necessary needs and, at each of the properties. And so I'm just coming here this morning just to ask for your review and approval. We've already discussed with the city and received their approval, their, of the resolutions to apply to Alamo area for the tax exempt bonds. And so I just wanted to come and provide this information and then I'm here just in case there's any questions or anything I can do to, to answer if you have any questions related to the process or these properties and what our plan is.
Basically what you're planning is a facelift for, you know, new and improved looks to them and everything like, like that or?
Well, it's substantial. We're, we're planning on about 45,000 a unit in rehab, so we're going to be in, in what we do in our normal typical rehab process is we'll address all the major components, roofs, ACs, appliances, things of that nature. So it's, it's more than just, there is, you know, exterior painting and things like that, but we're really trying to make sure we address the major systems at the properties as part of this rehab.
And all you're asking us is to give you a resolution of no objection?
Yes, we just need, as part of the process, Alamo has just asked for approval from the city and the county, so that's all that we would, just a resolution of no objection, which I believe I, I provided and, and so it's just a, you know, approval from, from that perspective.
You anticipate substantial fees going up to these renters?
No, they, these are all current tax credit properties.
Okay.
And so their rent is limited per the HUD and per state limitations, so it would always be at or below the, those amounts.
So where is the funding coming from for these renovations?
Yeah, so we would be applying for tax credits from the state agency, which has been sold to equity investors. So those funds, along with the tax exempt bond funding, those two are paired together to finance the, the rehab that takes place.
So there's state funds or?
And then we would take on that loan payment going forward.
Is this your typical financing model?
Yes.
How many, how many apartments have you done before? So give us an idea of the experience.
We, in Texas alone, I've been working here with our company since about 2020 and we've, we've closed on about eight to 10 different properties and started rehab and completed those. So, and then we do, obviously, you know, we're in several different states as well where we're, we're doing the, these type of rehabs for, and this would be a specifically a 4% tax credit property paired with a tax exempt bond structure. So the structure is the same, kind of, that's what the plan would be going forward and, and on all those projects that I just mentioned, but we've done about eight to 10, I'd say over the last few years here in Texas.
Okay.
And we, like I mentioned earlier, just to reiterate, the, our contractor and, and architect, our team, we've worked on all these together, so it has been a, we've, feel like it's been a very good relationship and we have a team that we've been able to kind of, each project has its own different things that come up, but we've been able to work together and, and work well as a team in this process.
So all these apartments are currently occupied? They have renters?
That's right.
So what's the process while you're doing renovations? Where do they go?
Yeah, so it's an in-place rehab, so we've developed and, and this is how we've done them on, on all the other projects. So it's basically work is done between eight and five. We, we let the tenants know what is going to be done prior to that and then the work is restored so they can return back to their units that night. And we do work in phases throughout the project until everything is complete. And if there is any need, whether it be an ADA unit or if there's any more extensive work that needs to be done, then we would either have vacant units available or we would have hotel options that we would pay for through our temporary relocation budget that we're putting in, in the plan. And then tenants would be moved, would be able to move back to their unit or a similar unit.
We just need a motion, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion? Your second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve a resolution of no objection regarding the request from, with the Alamo area for a tax exempt bond inducement and the proposed rehabilitation of three properties, Heritage Oaks, the Meadows and Paseo de Paz as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take another. I don't see Ernesto yet.
Okay.
Approval.
Approval agenda.
Okay, move over to the information agenda or the approval agenda. 2.1, Budget Amendments.
Do you have before you nine budget amendments? Seven are just line item adjustments and two of them were for grants.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Pay bills.
The invoices for today's consideration, $1,939,165.35.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve paying the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.3, Late Bills.
There are none.
2.4, Auditor Reports.
There's none, very few.
2.5, Accept Monthly Reports.
Yes, for March 2025, Justice of the Peace, Judge Midsey French, Precinct One, Judge Horn, Precinct Two, Judge Kathy Mitchell, Precinct Three, Judge Bill Ragsdale, Precinct Four, Constable Tommy Rodriguez, Precinct One, Kyle Snyder, Precinct Two, Paul Gonzalez, Precinct Three, Brad Ryder, Precinct Four, County Clerk's Office, County Clerk Nadine Alford, Environmental Health, O S F F, Director Ashley Batters, District Clerk's Office, District Clerk Dawn Lance, Payroll, County Treasurer Tracy Solden. I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.6, Court Orders. I reviewed court orders number 41180 through 41207. It may appear to be in order. So I would move that the court orders be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the court orders as presented. Raise your hand.
You're a legger today, aren't you?
I know, I wasn't going to dumb.
Okay. Information agenda, we don't have any department reports today, but let's go on with 3.1, status reports from department heads. Anybody do report anything? Reagan? Shane?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you guys a real quick update on our, no, we had come to talk to you guys about the cat issues and possibly even workshop. I'll probably want to meet with you Commissioner Holt sometime in the next week or two, when you have time, just to discuss a few things, but I haven't forgotten about it. We've just been real busy between the building being built and just a lot of stuff going on. I wanted to let you know, I've tried to figure out ways to help with some of these things and that's involved our department kind of figuring out the best way to work with the city because a lot of these issues are inside the city limits of Kerrville.
What, what issues?
The cat, the cat issues, just a, just a lot of different things involving cats.
Couple of different colonies.
Yeah.
That we've been made aware of. One, we need to visit Vicksburg Village now. Hopefully that gentleman's been healed off from COVID and we'll, we'll accept our visit.
Yeah, I haven't really heard anything else about some of that. I know some of those problems were resolved, but my department figuring out what our role in some of that is, you know, because the citizens of Kerrville naturally, well, the whole county naturally call us because we are animal control. But with the ordinance that was adopted by the city, I think it was in August of this last year, you know, we're trying to figure out what our role is with that because it's got, it's got a little more teeth to it, I guess you'd say. The city can do a little bit more than they could before to help with some of these issues prior to us getting involved in it. And I've actually tried to get them a little more involved, get my staff more up to date on what the new ordinance is. Hearing complaints and things make them realize, hey, you know, this is something that can start with the city and that's actually been very helpful. And I want to commend Donna Boyer over there. She's doing a great job taking all these complaints. We're keeping them real busy with these things, but some of these issues can actually be resolved without us even being involved in it because there's things the city can do at, at the beginning of these complaints that are a big help. So we're just trying to get them a little more involved with that type of thing. They're doing a great job with it, but it's mostly information sharing. My people see things out there that the city does not necessarily and we need to make sure that we're giving the information that they need to be able to do their job.
So with the city not having an animal control, will they go to like code enforcement or?
Code enforcement handles these complaints and so they, and so they're actually having to figure out too what their best practice is for, for handling these things. It's new to them too. You know, there was a code of ordinance for animals before, but it wasn't quite as in-depth, you know, I mean, it didn't have as much stuff in it. So they're having to figure out, okay, well, how do we do this too? So we've had some good meetings. I've, I've met with, with the city code enforcement on, on some of these things and work well together. We're just trying to get everybody a little more on the same page and it's a learning experience for both the county and the city. So I just wanted to give you guys an update on that. I haven't forgotten about it. Things have just been very busy and they've cooled off a little bit, so just wanted you to know. Thank you.
Shane?
Precinct One. It's mostly Precinct One.
I'd like to bring it to your attention that we're, we're having an issue with the, the elevator, our main elevator for the courthouse. It's been making some odd noises, grinding silent sounds, but anyhow, we called the elevator repair company, they came out that day, took a look at it and they found the issue. There is a main bracket beam on the, the elevator cab that needs to be re-welded.
That doesn't sound good.
Well, and, and to confirm this, because you know, this may be an issue, people hearing the noise and everything, the cab is not going to hit the ground. It's not, it's not a cable hoist where, you know, where, you know, it's what, there is two guide, you know, two four-inch pipes that the, the elevator not rides on, but it just guides to keep it nice and straight. It's actually works more like a piston, like on a hydraulic lift. That's how the elevator goes up and down. It's not a cable hoist. But what it's doing is it's allowing the elevator to move side to side a little bit, giving that, that, that rubbing grinding noise. So when we got the elevator technician out there, he reported it to his office and they sent me a quote to, for the repair and, oh, let me give you that note, of $9,704 for the repair. So it's something I got to get done. I mean, I can't, it's, like I said, we, we don't have to worry about the elevator falling or anything like that. It's just, it, the noise will, you know, will get worse if we do not do anything with it.
I just wonder, is it real sophisticated or, I mean, is it something that a local welder could do for a heck of a lot less money?
I've, I've, I've thought of that and I, after discussing this with Commissioner Harris, is that being that it is an elevator and we're not certified elevator technicians, we might run into some issues. I mean, my guys could weld it, or I could. It's just, you know, we're not certified elevator technicians and if something came of it, then we would be liable.
Reliability.
Be liable.
Or we'd get Commissioner Holt to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not that kind of risk, buddy. Not for elevators.
So.
Okay, fair point.
Well, we got Shane up here. I, I've asked him to look into something else, something that's been brought to my attention out at the West Kerr Annex is that, that gym we have, and we have a long-term lease, lease with a, a, a sports group, a youth sports group out there. They have a, there's, if y'all have ever been out there, there's a huge propane tank out there. Only thing connected to that thing is a heater in that gym. And Trey Whitten, the, in charge of maintenance with the ISD said it is totally inefficient. It goes to so much propane. He suggested, I don't know why they hadn't already, but he suggested looking into getting a heat pump for that building. He said, you're going to be a lot better off. So I, I, I charged Shane with looking into that and see where we can go from there because.
You pointed out to me, there are old things worth, worth investing in, like that elevator that needs to be done right, and then there aren't.
Yeah, exactly.
Are worth investing in and that, that heat pump is one, eventually it's got to go and we got to get a solution to reposition that.
Propane heater, yeah. So anyway, Shane's going to look into that for us as well.
Okay. Second.
Well, we'll see towards the end of the year.
Okay, 3.2, Status Reports from Elected Officials. All shaking hands. Item 3.3, Status Reports from Liaison Commissioners.
Been to quite a few of my liaison meetings. All of them, I mean, UGRA Headwaters, got another one for UGRI later this week and been meeting with all the different county liaisons I've got. I think everything's running very, very smooth and efficient right now. Nothing outstanding that needs to be reported on.
Go ahead.
Anything else? Yeah, on the, oh, anything else? Okay, Precinct Two, on the APO Council, we were going to have a meeting next week.
gonna have a meeting next week, but that's been rescheduled for Tuesday, May sixth, six PM at the Hill Country Youth Events Center. And still working on the agenda, which is part of the reason that we had to reschedule, try to get the right people to show up. So anyway, I'll get an agenda a little bit later this week on our next APO Advisory Council meeting. On Earl Garrett, five fifty Earl Garrett, which is now Aliberton Annex. Anyway, that mustard architects and keener engineering completed their detailed plans for all the modifications and Charlie Hastings is working on preparing documents for the RFP. I'm not sure if he's gonna be in court on the twenty eighth to start that RFP process, but hopefully if not, then the next court date afterward. On the indoor arena, the roof replacement project, Martinez Roofing and Construction are in the process of installing the new roof on that indoor arena. It, I was out there yesterday looking around. They pretty well have done all the structural repairs, a little bit left, but, and they're about fifty percent done on the new roof installation. So it, it looks a heck of a lot better with the new installation, nice and shiny and right in there.
Wondering about that hailstorm, no impact?
Well, you know, I couldn't get up on the roof, so I don't know. Yeah, nothing's been brought to my attention. And, and of course, we, we still expect, we, we expect to complete that roof replacement project by the end of this month. So it, it's all on track. And the only other one that I want to bring to everybody's attention is for the OSSF group. I'm planning to invite Mr. Randy Chilet, who is Executive Director with Texas On-Site Wastewater Association, to come to our next Commissioners Court meeting on the twenty eighth to provide a presentation on Tawa, again, Texas On-Site Wastewater Association, and a new OSSF order that this court should consider to better protect the environment and public health with more stringent rules than provided in the TAC Chapter two eighty five. So he's gonna have a model county order that we can review and consider. And that'll be a part of next meeting on the twenty eighth. I'm told it might take about twenty minutes to work through all that. So, and that's all I got.
Three updates for Veteran Services. Just want to say that Jenna Sanchez got her eighty eight boots, which is great. We might need ninety now because we just put two more dames on there. We'll get them.
I'll deliver two more later, see.
Bless your heart. Thank you. That's cool. But she's really excited. I, I'm sworn to secrecy about how it's gonna look, this play. So it's gonna look great. I'll just say that. For animal control, update, they laid the base course at the right time, right before the big rain came, and it really helped for them to move equipment. We had a great meeting. I don't want to publicly thank Kelly, offer and crew for being there. They're having to rearrange the priorities on laying some chip seal down because they need to make that road a little more secure in order to fulfill our obligation to the fire inspector to make sure we have a hardened road down there and a water source before we go into vertical construction. Part of the process is to put concrete down, have materials to do concrete, to have a surface road before all that risk is done. The contractor and the engineers are aware of that, but sure glad Charlie and I and your folks were there for that last meeting. We helped get things maybe back in order and get everyone in a safe agreement with the fire inspector. So thank you. But there is going to be an impact on some precinct roads. Just, we'll, we'll see where it shakes out. Two. So next is the, he didn't hear that, did he? Precinct two. Airport, some good meetings, happy to report. There is some coordination though that still needs to be done for paying some bills with the auditor and more importantly with the airport board to make sure they have their bills paid. I had a little discussion with Dalton Rice over that and I'm tracking that and I'll have my attention for a little bit this week. And they do have a new recommendation. Don't want to spoil that, but it will become before the board on May twenty seventh, before our commission on May twenty seventh. Looks like a very suitable candidate with some great military experience that I looked at and also private pilot experience to make a good recommendation for the board. So coming on May twenty eight, or May twenty seven. That's it. Thank you.
Right. Well, Shane was here, but I will tell you that the next Commissioners Court, there will be some discussions about from nine one one as far as naming roads and what have. Right now, there's a moratorium on naming roads till we, we do some things. So anyway, that's about it. Okay?
Okay. And with that, we're gonna go to the time items. One point twenty six, mid-year review of the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employees Benefit Pool, presentation by Ernesto Martinez and Mark Zilich.
Good morning, again.
This is about to go first.
Yes. Just a quick kind of introduction. So we're getting ready to come up on our renewal. So we're about midway through our plan year. And so that's why Ernesto and Mark are here to give a presentation on where we are. Our renewal rates will be coming out, which they'll go into detail about, but that's what today's about.
Morning Judge Commissioners. Mark's handing out the hard copy of the presentation. And Judge, Commissioner, I want to be mindful of your time. How, how much time can we go? Because I could talk, we can talk all day about this, but.
We don't want to go that long.
Okay.
Three minutes.
I can keep it to five if you, no, I'm just kidding. But I just want to be mindful. If we need to speed things up, please let us know. But we try, won't go no further than between twenty, thirty minutes, depending if you have any questions. Okay? So, so real quick, we'll just go ahead and get started. So of course, I'm Ernesto Martinez, your employee benefits consultant. Of course, Mark Zalich is here, who's your wellness consultant. We're here to, just to present our media review to kind of demonstrate and show you where that, where the county is running regarding claim wise and everything. So if you flip to that first page, where it talks about the value of our health employee benefits membership, I believe there's a few court members that are, that are still in there new, or just got elected and everything. We kind of want to, to, to kind of refresh on why we provide a health pool for our members. So size is the big reason why we, we are pretty successful in our, in our health pool. The more people we have, not just employees, we're talking about dependents and spouses, the more that we have, the more we can spread the risk out. That's the, the pooling effect, which is that next subject. But the, this gives us more buying power to renegotiate fees, our, our contracts with our vendors and everything to help keep costs down as well. Okay? Because as you know, what really drives cost up is the employees and the dependents is your claims. Okay? So we understand things happen and everything, but the more we have in our pool, the more, that's where that pooling effect comes into play, where we can spread that risk, keep costs down. Our long term, our long term, long term goal is to keep stable rates. One year you may be up in high increase, another you may be down. So, but that's where the pooling effect with all these people in there to kind of help level that out to keep costs down as much as possible. We partnership with Blue Cross Shield of Texas on the, on the dental vision, life products. But on the pharmacy side, we contract through Navitas. Okay? So, so real quick, if you turn to the next page, I'm kind of skipping over this media review. We're here to educate, to bring awareness and everything. You can skip over the overview as well. I want to get right to where it says plan review. Okay? So right now, I'm just talking about the coverages are just offered, that you offer to your employees with the Texas Association of Counties. And that's the medical and the dental. All right? So right now, your dental, your dental plan has a, it's a non-grandfather plan. You have an individual deductible fifteen hundred dollars and then for the family is forty five hundred. On the prescription side, you have no deductible for, for the prescription, which means they don't have to be deductible for those copays to, to apply. All right? You're as far as your claims experience, your current twelve month loss ratio, and what I mean by the loss ratio, we're comparing how much of contributions that we're collecting for the county to pay out on claims. All right? So the data that I have here for you right now on your twelve month loss ratio, we're looking at a, that data is incorrect. We're looking at February of this year going back to March. Okay? That's incorrect. I apologize for that typo. But right now, your loss ratio is running about a hundred and twenty five percent loss ratio. We, I, we want to see anything below a hundred percent. Ideally, we'd love to see counties running about eighty six, ninety percent loss ratio. So right now, you're running a little bit higher right now. But if you go, if, but if you look at your thirty six month loss ratio, which we go back two years, you're still averaging ninety nine percent loss ratio. So I have, we're gonna go into a little bit more depth, but as you can see, the last two years, y'all were running really good. This year, you're just running a little bit higher on claims right now. And Mark's gonna go into details about what's really driving that cost. Okay? The one thing right now, if you go, look at the high cost claimants, the, the very bottom information there, we're looking at claims over a hundred thousand dollars. These are these high claims that are running, driving the cost up, where you'll see seven, you're gonna see seven claimants that are ranging between a hundred thousand and two thousand. And there's one claimant that's over two hundred thousand dollars right now. All right? And we'll go into a little more details, a little bit more specifics, and I'll show you what, whether it's medical or prescription that's driving that high cost claimant. Okay? All right. So here's enrollment information. Basically, we're looking at current data, the current anniversary date, your October to February compared to last year. Okay? And this overall membership is just saying that your membership actually decreased just a little bit under one percent. Okay? And your average age is thirty, thirty, thirty seven point four, which actually increased. Y'all got a little bit older within that last, from last year, about two point five percent. So you got just a little bit older. All right? But real quick, if we go back to that plan review, I completely forgot to skip over, but I do want to, to iterate the credibility formulas that we use to determine the renewal. We look at credibility factor. We look at your demographic factor and we look at your area factor. I apologize for skipping over this, but I definitely want to bring to your attention because this is what comes part of the renewal. So not only we look at your loss ratio, we also look at the credibility of your size. Okay? Y'all are over three hundred employees, are a little bit bigger. So your claims are about eighty five percent credible. Okay? Eighty five percent of predicting how much, what we're gonna be paying when you're projected claims. All right? Now, your demographic factor, you are actually a little bit about a percent younger than the average age of the pool. The average age is running about thirty eight, thirty eight years old. So the younger you are, the less risk you are as well. Okay? And your area factor, the, the, the cost of healthcare services in this area, it's about six percent, a little bit over six percent less compared to the, to the average of the state of Texas. Okay? So those are the other things that come into factor when we are setting the renewal. Okay, so let's go to the financial dashboard real quick. So we're looking back three years. If you look on the right hand side, this is the current data that we're looking at, February twenty fifth, going back to March of two thousand twenty four. Okay? As I mentioned already, if you go all the way down, your loss ratio is at one twenty four. Okay? Last year, your loss ratio was eighty eight. And then the year before it was eighty three. So the last two years, your loss ratio was running where we, exactly where we wanted. Okay? This year, we're seeing a little bit of spike on high cost claims right now. Okay? So if you turn to the next page, we have prescription categories, your top prescription categories. So you're looking, as you can see, there's pharmacy paid. This is just for one year. We're looking at February twenty fifth to March of two thousand twenty four. Your top drug category is the targeted immunomodulators. That's a mouthful, ain't it? Immunomodulators. Mark, those are, can be cancer related.
specifically cancer drugs, yes.
But as you look, your, your second top category is anti, anti-diabetics. Okay? That's where you're getting your second highest cost of people, employees, spouses or dependents who are, are taking some type of drugs due to diabetes. Okay? All right. So real quick, let's go to the next page is dental utilization. This, we kind of wanted to bring to your attention, as, as you know, we, we always talk about preventative services on the medical side, but it's also important on the dental side. Oral health means so much because, believe it or not, Mark has a, a specific presentation on dental health. But the, if you don't keep up with your oral hygiene, it can lead to other health conditions in your body as well. So this utilization is based off preventative services. Okay? And we're going back three years. But the most current data, we're looking at about overall forty eight percent. Okay? People going to get their, either their cleanings, getting their exams, getting their x-rays done. And as usual, we'd love to see those numbers increase as much as possible. Okay? And Mark may have some recommendations on possibly maybe adding to your current wellness incentive that y'all have in place, possibly adding the dental exam as well to it as well. Okay? All right. So if you turn to the next page to emergency room utilizations, this is a very interesting report. As you know, going to the emergency room is very expensive, very expensive. And if you have, or if anybody has very general type of a, a, a health, you know, like allergies, maybe a pink eye running fever, instead of going to the emergency room, of course, we have other, other avenues that we're trying to direct employees to go, whether it's MD Live, go into the emergency room, or just go see your, your primary, your primary care physician. Because as you know, if, with MD Live, it's a zero dollar copay and you don't have to go anywhere. You can talk to the doctor over the phone, over the tablet, and it costs the employees and your dependents nothing. It's a zero dollar copay. The cost to that, to those claims, it's only ranges about fifty eight dollars compared to if you go to the emergency room, the average cost there is gonna be fifteen hundred dollars or, or higher. Okay? So what this is saying here, okay, excuse me, that if you, we had number of claims, a hundred and ten claims between this time period, the potential non-emergency visits were twenty six. So about twenty percent of the cost here could have, could have gone elsewhere. It could have gone through MD Live or anything like that. That's still fairly low, but we would love to keep the emergency room costs, visits down as much as possible and go elsewhere, which is gonna be a lower cost claim as well. Okay?
So that's about ninety thousand dollars worth of, of non-emergency.
Yes.
Might even support the PR because of the size of inspection or other things. So that's, that's low hanging fruit as far as helping your employees learn what level of care to go in the future will help you save money enough.
Absolutely. Better continue to educate them, where to go and everything. Always helps. Any money that we can save, this is taxpayer money. We want to save the taxpayers' money as much as possible.
Okay, so looking at your top diagnostic, diagnostic categories, you can see that over the past two years, that if you look at the, the light blue bar, the total amount went down last year, but increased this year. So we're, we're looking at a significant increase in a lot of that, if you look year to years, in the musculoskeletal connective tissue area, which is largely driven by things like knee replacements, hip replacements, that sort of thing. We went from, from two hundred and forty two thousand last year to four hundred and seventy two thousand this year. So a two hundred thousand dollar increase just in that one category. And we'll, we'll get to ERASTI utilization, but that is our low cost, zero risk treatment option for musculoskeletal stuff. And so that's gonna be one of my recommendations, is that we really push utilization of that and awareness among your employees. Probably bring them in to do a, a presentation and maybe some onsite diagnostics with some of your employees. And this is something that should be utilized, as much as possible should be utilized as a second opinion before somebody has a, an expensive surgery for something that is musculoskeletal related. That's the main point on, on, on this slide. If we flip the page to look at top chronic conditions, we can see that hypertension or high blood pressure has been your top chronic condition for the last three years. And the cost there has gone up. Now, when you're, when you're talking about chronic conditions and driving claims, driving costs, that, the, what they drive tend to varies year to year quite a bit. Most of our counties see things go up and down and fluctuate. It's just depending on what's needed to help treat that condition. it's just depending on what's needed to help treat, uh, that condition. Um, and, and so you can see we're at, uh, you know, three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for hypertension this year. Interestingly, depression is ver, is up significantly. Um, and to me, that, uh, that, um, um, you know, your number of claimants is not up significantly, but your cost is. Uh, to me, that suggests, uh, a couple, uh, of inpatient stays for severe clinical depression. Um, but all I would say about that is that is a good investment of money, because when people are, are dealing with depression and getting it treated rather than not treated, um, you know, you're, you're helping your employees improve their, their quality of life, their long-term outcomes, prevent suicides, et cetera. So, that's not necessarily a horrible use of money. Uh, that's a, you know, that's a, that's a good thing. That means, uh, uh, people are getting real with, with how they're doing emotionally, uh, and, and that's a good thing. Uh, but I will say, take note of the people who are eligible for hypertension and diabetes, we're at about a hundred and eighty-something, a hundred and ninety. Uh, I'll reference that number later. If we flip to preventive practices, annual physicals, uh, we can see among your employees, there's been a nice increase the last few years. Um, in twenty-two to twenty-three, I read forty-six percent of your subscribers' employees, then it moved to forty-nine, and this year fifty-six. So, that's, uh, I think, a function of continuing education with your employees, a function of your, uh, uh, wellness incentive, which incentivizes your employees to get their, their annual physical, um, and your overall, uh, utilization has increased as well. Um, that, that is a, a good thing and movement in the right direction. And I will also say, because Ernesto and I have been doing mid-year reviews in, in many counties the past couple of months, um, that this is among the highest percentage rates that we see. I think the pool averages a whole is right around thirty-nine, forty percent. So, y'all are significantly, uh, above that, um, for your employees, which is a, a good thing. I'm gonna actually, uh, skip ahead, uh, we'll come back to the healthy county participation, but if we, uh, flip to the, I think it's the second to the last page, uh, top ten high-cost claimants, because that reflects the medical claims, uh, so it's in the back in the appendices. Um, we can see that we have, uh, about five very significant, uh, high-cost claims that are, uh, over, well, I guess eight of them over a hundred, but, uh, some of them significantly more than that. And you can also notice the difference between the medical paid versus the pharmacy paid, right? It's about, uh, but they're pretty even split, where some of them are driven by the medical claims, but there's also some people with some very expensive pharmaceutical drugs, and not that much on medical side. And so, that is, is, you know, a variety of different conditions, uh, that are, that are driving those costs. Just wanted to bring that to your, to your attention. Um, so if we come back to, uh, the healthy county participation, that's slide fourteen, or page fourteen, no, uh, these are the different programs and services. The fact that you don't have any participating in Wonders is not a huge deal. That used to be called Naturally Slim. Um, but that lumped together with OMADA, uh, those are our two programs for, uh, diabetes prevention, heart disease prevention, and weight loss. Um, so we'd like to see, considering the number of chronic conditions, the, the high level of, of some of your chronic conditions, we'd like to see that higher. Lavango participation, um, is pretty good. That's forty, you had forty-seven people participating. That's the program specifically for hypertension and diabetes, which is why I drew attention to that number earlier. So, you have about just shy of a hundred and ninety people who are eligible for Lavango, and forty-seven people using it. So, about, uh, uh, between a quarter and a third of your people using it. Um, and if we can increase, now, not everybody is, some people manage their diabetes or their hypertension very well with their doctor, and they don't need outside assistance. Um, but when your numbers, whether it's blood sugar or blood pressure are extremely high, that's when you have the, you know, catastrophic, life-changing, and very expensive medical events happen. So, we wanna help, uh, uh, people can keep those numbers under, under tight control. And then I mentioned the AROSTI. So, your, your biggest chronic condition category, uh, was musculoskeletal claims, um, and you only had six people utilize AROSTI this past year. So, we definitely need to push on that, uh, with your employees, both us at TAC, uh, and your, your wellness and HR-related folks. Um, get, get something going there and get more people utilizing, uh, AROSTI, both for general treatment and as a, the second opinion before surgery. MD Live, uh, you have a good number of people, uh, utilizing that, that's good. That's the virtual visits on your phone, that's great for a lot of basic, uh, medical sort of things, and very convenient, especially if you have kids. Your, uh, employee assistance program, uh, nobody utilized that, but that, that's pretty true among, across a lot of counties. I think the highest we've seen has been, what, about one percent? So, so the fact that you're zero is not a huge differentiation. Uh, WebMD One, which is our, what, the new wellness platform where we host the fitness contests, you have thirty-seven users this year, uh, that's pretty good. I mean, we definitely wanna see that go up over the time, but for, for the first year, uh, that's not bad. Um, did a couple of wellness workshops with Tracy last year with your employees, those went well. Uh, and we just gave you a, a check for a little over four thousand dollars, uh, back to, uh, the county for wellness-related stuff. Um, so, my observations, your annual physical and dental, uh, prevention rates are great. Y'all are doing a great job with that. The largest increase was in that musculoskeletal, uh, that almost doubled. Uh, twenty-four percent of those emergency visits were non-emergent reasons. That's a cost-saving, uh, low-hanging fruit area. Um, and then the top four chronic conditions, uh, increased. So, um, my recommendations for helping contain those costs, you know, strategies, uh, to contain costs are educate your employees on non-emergent ER utilization and the medical levels of care needed, and that's something both Ernesto and I can do, uh, with, with your employees. Uh, we need to continue pushing, uh, uh, Teladoc, which Teladoc and Lavango are, are the same, they changed their names, uh, and OMADA for people who are at risk for hypertension, for those, uh, for lipids, triglycerides, that sort of things, and weight. Do a AROSTI campaign with your employees. And then on top of that, uh, compared to a lot of counties, you're all are pretty proactive and pretty engaged, so keep doing what you're doing, because some things, like those high annual physicals and high dental engagement, uh, are, are being, you know, y'all are pretty effective with that. So, I'm turning back over to Ernesto to talk about some timelines related to your renewal. Yes, sir?
You said something I don't understand.
Yes, how can?
Somebody suffering from a muscular skeletal issue.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm sticking it on the VA, don't worry, mostly. You said, what was the campaign to try to eliminate muscular skeleton, UROS?
No, okay, so there's a, there's a, a, it's a statewide, and even in a number of other states, a treatment protocol and a company called AIROSTI, A-I-R-R-O-S-T-I. You can look up their website, airosti.com. Um, so it's something that at TAC, uh, we brought to the table as an alternative treatment for musculoskeletal, uh, pain and musculoskeletal issues, if you will. About five or six years ago, Ernesto?
Six years.
Six years ago? Um, it is, uh, zero risk, because it's not invasive. It's, uh, very effective, they have a ninety percent resolution of all MSK pain, um, and it's relatively low cost. The TAC board voted to make it available to all county employees that are in the pool, rather than paying deductible and co-insurance, which would be much higher. They voted to make it available just at your regular doctor visit copay. So, it lowers the barrier to entry, so employees can use it for even a lower cost. So, we're kind of channeling employees towards it by making it available at the copay. Um, and, uh, the average visit to, as a claims cost, uh, to the county, uh, is just over two hundred dollars. So, it's a pretty low claims cost, and the average number of visits to hit that ninety percent pain resolution is like three point one visits. So, it's an average of a six hundred dollar treatment to resolve ninety percent of people's pain.
I hear you, but what is, what, what do they do?
So, okay, so the actual treatment protocol after they, so they don't use, uh, like, high-end MRI, expensive diagnostics, they do functional onsite testing with a person. If it's your shoulder, you know, they'll be like, does this hurt, does that hurt, does this hurt? You know, all that sort of stuff, there, you know, I can't explain it all, because I'm not trained in it, but you get the general idea. So, they do onsite functional testing, and then the actual treatment po, protocol, um, is kind of, the best way to describe it is high-intensity, um, locally-directed, uh, very, very deep-tissue massage to the point of painful, but what they're doing is breaking up scar tissue, restoring blood flow, bringing in nutrients to the affected area, followed by functional physical therapy where, where members learn strengthening and stretching exercises for that affected body part. But then they go home, do that hopefully every day along with icing until their next visit. And, and that protocol has a ninety percent success rate. So, it's pretty effective, and I, I can speak personal experience. Over the past decade now, I've, I've had AROSTI on probably eight or nine different body parts. One of the big ones is neck and shoulders, because Ernesto and I are doing this forty or fifty thousand miles a year. Um, and, yeah, so, and completely dealt with my neck issue, and if it ever arises again because we're continuing to drive as much, you know, I, I, uh, my briefcase is in, in my car, but I have my little lacrosse ball that AROSTI gave me that I, you know, utilize in my hotel room if, if I get a flare-up. So, I know how to self-treat, um, and, and keep that pain and, you know, shoulders doing this all the time down. So, so, the bottom line is, most pain in our bodies is caused by, uh, uh, what they call, um, uh, this, well, it's soft tissue, basically. Um, the things that, the fascia that tie our bodies together. Um, and so, so their focus is that soft-tissue treatment, where a chiropractor, you know, rearranges bones, which can help sometimes, but oftentimes, if a, if a muscle or a ligament is super tight, it'll pull that bone right back out again, right? And, and chiropractors, you gotta keep going and going and going, you know, for months and sometimes years, where, and I've, I'm, I'm a chiropractor advocate, like, I've done that myself, and it's been helpful. But I find AROSTI to be much more helpful, because they resolve those mu, either muscle tightness or imbalances, where you have one set of muscles that are, are really strong, and another opposing set that are weak, so it causes chronic structural misalignment, and, and AROSTI deals with that too. So, it's a very effective, again, zero-risk, very low-cost treatment option. Um, can it fix everything? No, it's about ten percent of things that, for example, if you completely, uh, separate a tendon from a bone, uh, that has to be, you know, sewed back on, um, AROSTI is not an appropriate fix for that, right? Uh, but a lot of low-back issues, so road and bridge crew and sheriff's office kind of injuries where you're, where you have, you know, you're in a chronic position seated, you know, in a squad car, and then you have to get out and run, or guys in the road and bridge crew lifting heavy things, um, you know, get a disc herniation. Well, AROSTI can help immensely in terms of teaching that per, both the treatment and, and learning what to do to separate that spinal column and allow the disc to reabsorb back in between the vertebrae and effectively cure it without any surgery, right? And in, in comparison, low-back surgery, you know, thirty, forty thousand dollars, and it only helps about thirty, thirty-five, thirty-eight percent of people resolve their low-back pain with low-back surgery, right? And, and AROSTI is ninety percent. Sir, question?
Who refers you to this AROSTI treatment?
You self-refer. So, you don't need to, you know, you, you have a PPO network, so you don't need a referral from your primary care doc. You just, if you've got pain in your shoulder, pain in your back, uh, it's also good for, for, uh, chronic, uh, overused things like carpal tunnel or sciatica or plantar fasciitis. Um, you just, uh, call up AROSTI, make an appointment. I think the closest one to here is Bernie. There's a, uh, yeah, there's not one in Herville, uh, but.
Give me a number.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, you've done a great job on the campaign portion of it, I liked it.
We have lawyers in our office, and we try to, you know, somebody comes to us, we try to educate them in a lot of these items that we talk about. But we do our part in HR, but we only know what people come in and ask about.
I'm sold.
Probably send us emails that we deleted and stuff like that.
But one thing to think, one thing to think about, you know, this musculoskeletal, if you're gonna go see a specialist like a orthopedic surgeon, right? Let's say you've hurt your shoulder, okay? The, uh, office visit or the specialist's visit is a copay, but what are they gonna ask for in order to do a little further diagnosis? They're gonna ask more likely for what? MRI, okay? MRI is subject to your deductible. Your deductible is a fifteen hundred dollar deductible. If nobody has met that deductible yet, that, if the cost of that MRI costs fifteen hundred dollars or more, they have to pay that deductible, okay? And then, maybe eighty percent of whatever's left over. But if you go to AROSTI, it is just a copay, and they do not want you to go back. So, before you even consider possibly going to that orthopedic, uh, specialist, you may wanna consider going to AROSTI just first to see if they can fix you. Now, if you do go to see the orthopedic, uh, specialist, go to AROSTI afterwards, and you might get a se, get a second opinion. They may be able to, to fix you without any other invasive type of, uh, surgery or anything like that. Because as you know, once you have surgery, you're never the same afterwards.
Definitely, whether it's low-back surgery, or knee replacement, or hip replacement, or something, it's worth getting, you know, getting that second opinion.
Yeah, AROSTI.
Money for the employee, but then also to save money for the, for the county for the plan, because it's taxpayer dollars.
No, I was just gonna say, it, it saves the county money, and it saves the employee money as well. Okay, so, uh, if, any other questions, Commissioner Hope on the AROSTI?
No, I'm looking at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good question, and, uh, it's a very important service that we definitely need to keep. We all, we come here for open enrollments and everything, and we have trainings here, but it's, we gotta keep it going for employees, because it may not hit everybody, maybe one year, but it may, may help out somebody another year, okay? So, uh, let's talk about the renewal timeline real quick. Uh, our board is actually gonna meet April thirtieth to, uh, to finalize rates, to let us know what's gonna be the average increase for the pool, alright? Last year's or this current average increase was a four point six percent. That was the average increase for the whole pool. Alright, so we're gonna have renewal webinar starting May fifth. Uh, I know HR will be participate, participate in that webinar. Uh, and, uh, Sylvia, feel free to, to pass on for that email to, to the court if they want to participate as well. Uh, the renewal will go out twenty, uh, May twenty-third, and the due date back will be June twenty-seventh, okay? That will go out, continue to go out via email. Uh, Judge, you'll get that email as well, as long as Sylvia will get a copy of it, uh, of the email as well, too. Uh, all else we have is just, we have some reports at the back of the appendix here. There's a thirty-sixth, uh, uh, month report here, if you wanna take a look at. It's a lot of information. Mark did bring to your attention about the top high-cost claim report as well. That top number-one claimant, as you can see, uh, over three hundred thousand dollars of pharmacy claim just alone on that one particular claimant. So, as you, this is just to demonstrate the increasing cost of pharmaceutical drugs. Uh, we can't control the cost of what these pharmaceutical drugs companies are charging, but the one thing we have control of is ourselves, okay? So, self, self-care is the most important thing. I, myself, I take responsibility to not put myself in the situation to be diabetic. Diabetes runs in my family. I do not want to put myself at, uh, uh, to be, uh, you know, to be diabetic and take drugs. I do not wanna be on any type of medication, and I currently am not, but.
And I think, um, uh, currently, uh, pharmacy claims are about thirty percent of your overall costs, and that's pretty reflective of the pool as a whole. Um, but pharmacy costs are increasing at double the rate of medical costs, just in terms of medical and pharmaceutical inflation, and it's projected within the next three to five years, of, the pharmacy portion of any medical plan will be about fifty percent.
Yeah. So, apparently, there's only one country in the, in the whole world that's actually allowed to market their drugs to the public. I guess Ozila's not on that.
Maybe not anymore.
But the United States is the only country in the world that actually market their drugs to the public.
And our, it's not, talking about ending that.
Yes.
Doctors love that.
Yeah. Uh, the last thing I wanna go over is your county history report, Judge Commissioners. Uh, this is, this is to, uh, to show you how you've performed as far as your rate increases, uh, throughout the years. Uh, that first rating year at the very top, you're in that current year right now, so we don't know what your renewal's gonna be this year, but the year before, you had a three point five percent increase, that's this current renewal. Compare that to the pool average, it was a four point seven. So, y'all came right under the pool average, okay? But, that's purely based on what your loss ratio, uh, was running. The year before was a one point six, okay? And as you can see, the pool had a little higher increase that year. We had a lot more high-cost claimants going on for the whole pool, but y'all were still performing well under that six point two percent. performing well under that six point two percent. And then the year before that was a three point five, which the past rating years, you have averaged a two point nine percent increase over those rating years, where the pool has, has been averaging a five point six. So currently right now, like I said, y'all have been running very well for the past three years. This year's a little different. As you can see, you have some high, ongoing high cost claims are going. Next year could be a different story, but we just want you to be aware, bring some awareness and we should have a better idea of what that pool increase is gonna be this year uh, in May, by May fifth, okay? And your surplus distribution, uh, that should say oper- uh, uh, operational surplus distribution. What that is, if there is a, a surplus of what we collected in contributions after operation costs and everything, uh, if there is a surplus of contribution, we give that back to our members as well. So over the last three years, uh, we've given back to Kirk County ninety-three thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars on surplus distribution, okay? Uh, every year is different. Uh, it's not a guarantee there'll be a surplus distribution, but that will vary depending on how the uh, pool is operating as well. Any questions, Commissioner, Judge?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, if you need my cards, I'll be glad to give you my card. You can reach out to Mark and I anytime y'all need to, if y'all have any questions. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a brief recess and go into executive session where we will discuss uh...
Yeah. We gotta take a little break.
It is 12:15, we're out of executive session and next item on the agenda is 5.1, actions may be required on matters discussed in executive session.
To revisit the 1.1.
I'll second motion.
Got a motion to second to revisit item 1.1 on today's agenda. Everybody in favor of revisiting, raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Now, go back and call 1.1, which is to consider discussing take appropriate action on a request from the hands-off Kirk County Democrats organization to use the courthouse grounds on Saturday, April 19, 2025, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. for a peaceful protest.
I'll just start off and say that I would like to revise my vote to the affirmative. I guess I abstained because I found it highly offensive that some of the folks that were involved from this group in the April 6 event were so disrespectful to an organization that had already obtained approval from the court to use the county grounds, and that was the folks with the car show. Of course, I would much prefer that they would pick any date other than this coming Saturday and Holy Week, but I recognize that they have a first amendment right to peacefully assemble and protest, and I respect that, and I respect that they're coming through the court seeking approval so that we know in advance. So as a result, I will change my vote.
They did put their best foot forward in coming to us this time. My no vote originally was because they showed poor judgment when they showed up and saw that there was an event already here and it was disruptive. And we heard that from several people in the car show that it wasn't necessarily, they weren't good neighbors for the event. And so in showing poor judgment, that's the reason I voted that way. Hopefully, hopefully the leaders can keep things right this time and I'm willing to vote again.
Any other discussion? And those in favor of approving the use of the courthouse by the hands-off Kirk County Democrats this Saturday, April 19th, from 10 to 2, raise your hand. Unanimous. There being no more business courts adjourned. We ought to call it.